I want to welcome.
Recording in progress.
Okay, good evening. I want to welcome you to the Wednesday, September 22, 2001 Regular Meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner O'Leary.
I'm here.
Commissioner Irvin.
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Maruzzi.
Here.
Commissioner Song.
Present.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Present.
Chair Womack.
Present.
Seven members present. We have a call.
Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, our agenda was posted on Thursday, September 16, and our meeting has been posted in accordance with state law.
Can I have a motion on the acceptance of the agenda? I wanted to say two things with that before I get a motion. One is that I've had two requests for Item 2B to go on the consent calendar. Unfortunately, we can't do that because it's a public hearing item. But we can move quickly through that if the commission is so moved to do so. And the second is, I'm going to pull the minutes of the July 28, 2021 meeting from the consent calendar. Can I have a motion on the agenda with?
So moved.
Another second.
Thank you. And can we have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. We are at public comments. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and other items, and items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the commission can't take action on an item that hasn't been agendized. Each speaker will have three minutes. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. Members of the public who would like to comment on 1A, 4A, and 5A are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. Mr. Newell, do we have members of the public who requested to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are some applicants for Item 4A. I believe would like to introduce themselves. Other than that, I haven't had any additional requests to speak. So for the members here for Item 4A, you may introduce yourself and unmute the microphone, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Rul Young. I would like to speak on behalf of Item 3A, Vista Sunrise Two Apartments. I represent the development team as the introducer and the Architect Interactive Design Corporation. We would like, if it's possible, to have the development team address the commission when the item comes up, as opposed to at this time. Is that possible?
Yes, that's possible. And you will have the same, the same three minutes each.
Terrific. All right, I'll back out. Thank you.
Who member, which members of the team will be addressing us later?
Thank you. Carl Baker from Desert AIDS Project, he's the Director of Legislative and Legal Affairs. Marian Ibarra, who is the Director of Multifamily Development at Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. Jeremy Franzini, who is the Landscape Architect for Michael Baker International. Richard Vaughn, who is the Civil Engineer. And myself, Rul Young, representing Interactive Design Corporation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then at this time, if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, who has not requested to do so in advance of the meeting, please unmute your microphone and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes. It doesn't appear we have any additional speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then we, the public comments are closed. We're moving to the consent calendar. And the only item on the consent calendar is the approval of the minutes of July 28, 2021. And I had pulled that item. I would like that sent back for redrafting. I believe the item is too is incomplete and needs to be amplified on two different items on item, let's see if I can. On Item 3A, Green Savants, there needs to be a description of what the motions 1 and 2 were, and then the finding. We basically made, I think this, this really doesn't, this item may be appealed, and I believe the record has to be accurate. We basically made a finding on, when we were not able to make finding 1, we took a vote as to whether the Dance Center was a youth center and voted yes. Then we were prohibited from considering the item for a CUP. And that should be very clear. It should also be clear on the vote that failed, which item, which additional item was being looked at. I don't know if anybody else has anything else on that, that item. And then on the Palm Springs Country Club, that discussion was much more nuanced than comes through in the minutes. And there was a very long discussion on the condition of the property with comments from J.R. Roberts and myself as to having seen it and what condition we saw in the property, that it wasn't secured and it wasn't being maintained. And I, I think we have to have an accurate record on that as well. Does anybody else have comments on this? Commissioner Roberts.
Does staff need our help in resurrecting that?
No, we've got the video from the meeting, so we can review that in terms of those corrections to the minutes.
Thank you.
Great. And that will come back at our next meeting?
Yes.
So should we postpone, the motion should be to postpone this to, to our next meeting, to a date certain?
Correct. You can continue it to the next meeting.
If the motion I seconded?
All in favor? If you'd call the roll.
The motion is, Womack?
Yes.
And second is Roberts. Chair Womack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
If I was absent from the meeting, would I abstain? Okay, I assume.
I can go ahead and note your abstention. Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Motion is approved, six, with one abstention.
Thank you. The next item is public hearings. Item 2A, Walmart Stores Inc., owner for a major architectural application, a conditional use permit, and a variance application for the construction of an automo, automotive fuel station and convenience kiosk located at 5601 East Ramone Road. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. The applicant. All right, one second. The applicant is applying for three applications. The first is a conditional use permit to establish and operate a fuel station. The second is a variance application to allow a reduced-sized convenience kiosk. And the third is a major architectural application to construct the fuel station in a commercial zone, as well as along a major thoroughfare, that being Ramone Road. So the photo that you're looking at now on the left is the overall Destination Ramone Shopping Center. The project site in question is the one that's highlighted in yellow along Crossley Road. It's on the far east section of the Destination Ramone Shopping Center. The photo on the right shows that not the entire parcel will be developed. It's only going to be the northern half of that parcel. So what you see highlighted in yellow will be where the proposed fuel station will be located. This is the proposed site plan. It measures about 460 feet by 165 feet. The required dimension is 200 feet by 200 feet, so it's a little substandard in depth. The applicant is proposing two entrances to the project site and three exit points. The, the arrow that you see on the far north, that, that will be a right-turn-only exit to alleviate traffic buildup in that area. And the two entrances will take place along the western property line to the project site. The applicant is proposing six, a 16-pump fuel station. They are proposing six parking spaces, underground fuel storage along the western property line, and additional landscaping as well. So as you can see, the project site is fully landscaped along the perimeter, especially along Crossley Road. Per ARC's comments, they've required that a landscape berm be placed along Crossley Road to reduce the amount of light that shines onto, I'm sorry, off the site, onto Crossley Road. They are going to be removing some landscaping on the western property line to create the entrances to the project site. And they are proposing some additional landscaping and vegetation, but it'll primarily be what you see now. So the applicant is also proposing a 440-square-foot convenience kiosk. The way the kiosk works is there will be one employee inside the kiosk at all times. Patreons will not have access inside the kiosk, and they will not have access to the merchandise. Instead, they will walk up to the window and essentially place their order. Once the order is placed, the employee will grab it from, from inside the kiosk and then hand it over to the customer. This will help with theft issues. And it was a recommendation by ARC. As you can see with the proposed color scheme and material, the kiosk and the canopy will be very similar in color material as the current Walmart store. They are proposing a variety of grays, light grays and whites. The orange, prefinished metal door and frames will be placed on the kiosk. There will be a metal fascia for the canopy and the kiosk as well. A tan stucco CMU block wall to screen mechanical equipment and trash enclosure, and some accent stones as well. So it will be very similar to the existing Walmart store. The applicant is proposing this style of canopy lighting underneath the kiosk. It's a typical light that's used for fuel stations, and it will be flush-mounted with the canopy. The applicant has submitted a photometric plan to show that light spillage won't be an issue onto Crossley Road. They are proposing some modifications to the existing monument sign. Not much will change. It will increase in size slightly to make room for the Walmart gas station prices. So all right, with that being said, while the proposed gas station will be in appropriate use with the M1 zoning designation, the size of the convenience kiosk does not comply with the development standards of the Palm Springs zoning code. And therefore, staff is recommending denial as submitted. That concludes my report, and the applicant is available for questions.
Questions of staff?
I have a question.
Please. Alex, can you take the the visuals off so that I can see the commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
So actually, I have three questions. What is the rationale for a minimum size to the kiosk? What civic good would be done by increasing the size?
So that is just the way it's written in our code. I don't know if David has an alternate answer for you, but unfortunately, that's just the way that it's written.
Commissioner Hirschbein, I would say that, you know, for, just historically, the city in terms of kiosks, probably in 50s or so, were very small for gas stations. And for whatever reason, over time, the, the city council, at whatever point they changed the, the law relative to gas station requirements, they chose to require a larger kiosk size. So the standard, I'm not sure at what point it was established or put in place, but they do require, there is a requirement in our code that 750 square feet is the, the minimum size for a kiosk.
So other than the fact that it's in the code, staff is not able to point to any specific benefits that would accrue to the city by increasing the size?
Nothing beyond what's in the code.
Okay, I've got a couple more. In terms of lot size, it's a little bit smaller in one dimension than is required. When you say required, is that required for filling stations? Or required for M1 zones? Or what is the, or in the PDD? What requirement is that?
The requirement for the M1 zone.
Okay, kind of the same question. Is there any civic good that will come out of a larger size lot than, than what they're proposing?
Every zone in our, in our city has a minimum, and sorry, minimum length and width. So I don't know if it would benefit for bigger size.
Is this considered a lot? Is it a subdivided lot?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's own parcel.
It's what?
Yes, it is its own parcel.
Okay. And then my final question has to do with what you mentioned about ARC requiring a berm. You said that the rationale was to reduce light spillage onto Crossley Road. You know, when you said that, it kind of, it kind of made me question how, how that could be, because typically, lights are up in the canopies, and the berm's only going to be, I don't know, four, five feet high. And then you showed the light that's going to be a canopy light, which is way up. I'm, I'm trying to understand, if anybody was at ARC when this was presented, what, what that rationale is?
So their concern was the parked vehicles getting gas, that light spillage they wanted to reduce onto Crossley Road.
Oh, so it's not the site lighting that they were concerned about? It was the automobiles themselves?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Are there other questions for staff? Commissioner Roberts, and then Commissioner Maruzzi?
Thank you. So I think I am directing my questions to Mr. Newell. So this is a separate parcel, correct? That was just answered. And is this not an extension of an existing business? In other words, it's, from my perspective, this looks like Walmart adding another product that they are selling. And would this not be an accessory building? Or an expansion on an existing approval? Obviously, the Walmart store more than meets the size requirements for the parcel. So is it really a wording problem here, more than anything else?
So the shopping center, it's pretty common for shopping centers to parcelize individual portions of a site so that those pieces can be leased long-term. So there may be one master owner who leases to Walmart, and then can also lease another parcel to the Walmart fuel station, another parcel to Del Taco, et cetera. So it's not uncommon for shopping centers to do a map to, you know, for financial purposes, and for those parcels not to meet exactly the standards of the city's lot sizes.
Okay. I understand that very often, our zoning is a survey suggestion. That's why I was asking a specific question. So if this had been brought to the city with respect to an expansion on an existing approval to an existing business, would it have been received differently? Or would you have made the same recommendation? Again, this isn't a separate business or owner. It's an extension of a business that's already there. It's, it's, they're simply creating a accessory structure to sell something they're not selling within the store now.
I don't know if we would be able to make a different recommendation, because it is accessory to the existing retail tenant on the, basically, the same center. The issue is, we have a standalone ordinance relative to automobile fuel stations, and irrespective of what primary and secondary uses, this is a standalone operation. And that's why we made the recommendation that we have.
Okay. But essentially, this is a variance that we can make regardless, correct?
Madam Chair, if I could just chime in for a second?
Yes.
To, to address some of Commissioner Roberts' questions on this. Even though, from a, from a practical, kind of holistic standpoint, all of this is Walmart, for purposes of reviewing this for development, this is a standalone lot, and it does need to comply with code in and of itself. It's not necessarily, again, while we may, in, in the public, consider this sort of an extension of Walmart's business and business model, we still look at this as its own application, its own lot. In addition to that, specific to the gas station, there is the issue of the minimum size of a convenience store, which, according to staff report, is not met in this case. But if the commission does find that it can make the findings for a variance, you can move forward on that basis. Staff's report indicates that the findings cannot be made, but if the commission can make those findings, then you could do the variance to, you know, deal with the smaller convenience store issue.
Okay, my last question would be, in this situation, the minimum si, the, the smaller-than-minimum-size building and the smaller-than-minimum-size kiosk or convenience store isn't having, I, I'm not reading in any of this that it has any significant, negative significant effect whatsoever on the parking lot, the public, the streets around it, with the potential of some bleeding headlights. Is that correct?
Well, Madam, you know, I would point out, Commissioner, that the policy of minimum size of the convenience store has been set by ordinance. That policy has been set. If the commission believes it can make the findings for a variance so that it could have a smaller kiosk, you, you can do that. The question of, is 750 square feet minimum a good policy for the city? Or detrimental or beneficial to the area? That's not really the focus of the question this evening, because the policy has been set by code. It's a 750 minimum. And if, you know, if the commission wishes to vary that, then you would need to make the findings for the variance.
I wasn't asking about the policy. I was being very specific about this application. And my questions were, are there any negative effects that this variance would create? Because I don't see any in the staff report. I only see that it's not within the zoning policies for size. Other than that, I don't see any negative impacts. Is, that's my question. Is that correct?
I think that's a question for Flynn and David.
Yeah, I'm not asking Mr. Perez. I, I am addressing Mr. Newell.
So when we look at the, the findings that were required to make, there's the first finding relative to the property. What is unique to the property?
David, Mr. Newell, would you answer Mr. Roberts' question?
In terms of negative effects?
Yes.
Negative impacts?
Staff would not identify, has not identified negative impacts relative to a gas station at, at that size.
So your reason for denial is simply that it's not fitting within its zoning size-wise?
Correct. When we look at strict interpretation of the findings relative to the property is something unique relative to the property. And if, if there is something unique, would we be granting a special privilege as well if we said 400 square feet is acceptable? You know, going back to the variance findings is really kind of the strict interpretation of how we view this, this application.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm done with my questions.
Madam Chair, if I might just put it more succinctly, it's because it violates code.
Commissioner Maruzzi, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Perez, you had mentioned that there were three elements to this decision. What was, what were the three again? One would be the size of the kiosk. What were the other two?
I'm sorry, you, elements?
Didn't you say that there was three things we're going to be voting on as relates to this overall?
There's three applications.
Okay, so can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so a conditional use permit application was required to establish and operate the fuel station at this location. The variance is to allow, or try to allow, the reduced size of the convenience store. So because it does not meet current code, that's what the variance application was for. And then the major architectural application is because they are building in a commercial area along a major thoroughfare.
So we could approve this conditional use permit and the major architectural and deny the, the variance request?
Theoretically, yes.
So they could potentially move forward with a gas station and with a, just a, somebody saying that we're with a cash register or something?
That's.
I, I think one of the issues that perhaps staff should address here is, to the extent the major architectural would be altered at all by, you know, having to go back into a convenience store that is larger than what's currently proposed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions? Commissioner Irvin and then Commissioner, Commissioner Alanian.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious. Would the lot support maybe making the kiosk bigger?
A lot would support that. However, the applicant is set on this specific sized kiosk.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Alanian?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. In my recollection, in recent, and by that I'm going to say, you know, 10, 12 years, the city has approved and have been constructed several other similar structures. One will be at Vaughn's Rimrock. Another will be the location where on El Placer and Ramon Road is. And I think maybe even the one at Sunrise and Vista Chino. And I know that a power market was also recently approved. Have any of these been granted variances? Or have any of these been allowed to build smaller markets than the 750 square feet?
That I do not have an answer for.
I can tell you from past experience, the Vaughn's fuel station was the, does meet the minimum 750 square foot kiosk that's there. But I don't know, I can't recall the others, what were the other two that you mentioned?
Okay, all right. My next question is, I know that in some of the findings and in the code, there's reference to the fact that certain development standards can be waived. Can you explain to me if a change from 750 square feet, a reduction down to 440 square feet, could be considered a development standard that could be waived without having a variance?
I don't believe that is a devil, development standard that could be waived.
Could we get a, could we get an answer to that from the, the, from Mr. Newell or the director?
So Ms. Elaine is correct. Your fifth finding for a conditional use permit does state that the conditions imposed on the approved site plan are deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. And may include minor modifications to the zone's property development standards. So in the zoning code, it does give examples in terms of the regulation of use, special yards or fences, service parking areas subject to city specifications. So there's some pretty specific things that are identified within the CUP section. However, a request that the applicant is proposing would not fall within that, those categories.
I think that's exactly what I was trying to find out. Well, let me ask you another question. And this deals with a finding that the size is adequate or not. One of the other things that were required to find is that the massing is adequate for the site. I'm having difficult time understanding how a building that is half the size and only a single story, that is essentially half the size of the minimum, could have a sufficient mass. Can you explain to me? Is the massing also a concern? If not, should it be? Because that is one of the parts of the findings.
The massing of the proposed kiosks?
Yes.
As it stands now or if we made it bigger?
As it stands now. Is it sufficient?
Staff believes it's sufficient in size. I'm so sorry, as it, not in the 440 square foot size, but it's not, it's not too big for what's being proposed.
Is it too small for what's being proposed? If the building is essentially half the size, I would guess.
Yes.
I would suspect that it is too small.
Yes.
So if we were to. Well, all right, I guess that comes to not being a question. And then I do have one other question, maybe two. Mr. Newell, you indicated a little bit of the history of how the ordinance came to be or that there were modifications. And you said, for whatever reason, at some point in history, the 750 square foot requirement was added. Is it possible to review the records of when that ordinance was modified and determine what the reasoning was? I understand Commissioner Roberts to say that he seemed to be struggling a little bit and asking the question of, are there negative impacts? Without, without knowing kind of what the intent was, I spent a lot of time this week, I'll admit it, I looked at a lot of gas stations this week. And I can come to my own conclusion, my own kind of belief as to why there could be negative impacts and, or why there are negative impacts from having too small of the, the kiosk or mini mart. But it sure would be nice to know what the original intent was. Is that something that if this were continued to give staff more time for research, that we'd be able to find out or no?
Yes.
Then, okay. And then I guess my final question would be, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you, Alex, or if it's for the applicant. But did you have, were there any conversations with the applicant regarding their prototype? I understand that this is a prototypical design they want to use. If it's, you know, it's always easier to use a prototype. My suspicion is, my belief is that there are probably, that the applicant has other prototypes that they use at other locations. Did you investigate with them the possibility of employing one of those other prototypes that is larger at this location?
I believe that they had stated that, well, yes, there are other prototypes at other locations. I want to say they are out of state. The applicant probably give you more information on where exactly they are located. But as far as making it, any change to it, as far as increasing the size, it was something that was not, that's something that they wanted to do.
So, okay, all right, thank, thank you. That answers my questions.
Commissioner Marutse, and then I'm going to recognize myself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just questioned the staff on page nine of the staff report, item two. What does the letter P mean under compliance?
Partial.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, partial.
And then at the conclusion of the paragraph, it says, "It is not harmonious to the surrounding area as it provides vending doors on the exterior elevations." So this is another point that somehow is in here. I don't know if it was coming to that conclusion or was the Architectural Review Committee. But it's not just the size of the kiosk, the fact that it has vending doors on the exterior elevations. Why is that an issue per se?
The Architectural Review Committee, they were not for the vending doors on the exterior elevations. They wanted this to be a convenience store that the patron could walk into. And they didn't want the convenience stores on the outside for light spillage outside of the, the windows and theft reasons, which I believe they've solved that, that issue. But essentially, it looked like a vending machine. And that's.
It wasn't the, the staff that, or there's no code requiring not having vending doors on the exterior. It was the Architectural Review Committee saying, "We don't like those for various reasons." Theft, light, and I think it was friendly to just have somebody in there in a cage just handing you your products.
Correct.
Okay, so I think we should consider that element as well because it's not just the size of the kiosk, it's the fact that they have this odd approach of exterior vending doors.
I, I'm going to recognize myself and then Commissioner Song and then Commissioner Hirschbahn. Two small things. Ms. Perez, when you mentioned Crosley Road, you meant Lawrence Crossley Road?
Yes.
And just to confirm, there's no possibility of doing a minor modification with this?
An AMM. An AMM would not meet the, I don't believe it would meet the 20%.
And for Mr. Priest, we got a letter from.
I'm, I'm so sorry, Madam Chair. I'm having trouble hearing you. There's a bunch of papers.
We got a letter from Mr. Dada from Palm Springs Resorts mentioning that, that a gas station and kiosk, I think it was 900 square feet, but a kiosk were previously approved for this site in the original approvals in 2005. Can you comment? Do any of those still hold?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. No, our position is that those entitlements have, you know, have lapsed. They did not vest. They were not used, you know, back in 2004, 2005 when they were issued. I would also note that even if they, you know, were still in effect, they did authorize a kiosk or a convenience store of 900 square feet. So there was no prior vesting that authorized a gas station where they, a convenience store proposed at this size.
And then if, if the commission were in favor, and I don't know that we are, of a smaller kiosk, how long would that process take for staff to go through city council and to come back?
I'll defer to staff on how long it would take for a code amendment to go through. I can tell you that, you know, we would draft the code amendment. It would go to the Planning Commission on a recommendation. And then it would go to the city council for a possible approval. Mr., Mr. Newell or Flynn? Any estimated time?
Typically, that's something that usually is about 60 to 90 days to get through that process.
And if you had wanted to do that, you would have done it with this application?
Yeah, I mean, staff has, had not evaluated making the change. We just said that, you know, here's what the city has as a requirement. But, you know, if the commission directs staff otherwise, we certainly could move that forward.
Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of simpler questions. Has the, has the fire department or, yeah, has the fire department, sorry, no, Rebecca. There are some four parking spaces right adjacent on the west side. And there's a driveway in between. Has that, is that dimension meet the requirements for a driveway? I know that it has a 45.1 on the wider side, but where the parking is backing into the kiosk, is, is there sufficient driveway width? And the second question, Ms. Perez, is if the maneuvering and turning radius of the whole sequencing of how cars come in and out, and if, if one of the char, gas station is full and then the other person has to go around, has that, all that clearance has been worked out and proven that there is enough space for clear circulation?
You know, when this project was first submitted, we talked with engineering to work on a better circulation plan. We came up with the right turn only at the north. Rick actually was the one that suggested that and the applicant complied. As far as the width of the, for the, for the fire truck, fire and engineering have evaluated the plans. So their conditions are there. And I would assume that it'd be sufficient sizing.
So Ms. Perez, what is the, do you know what the width of that driveway is between the kiosk and the parking spaces on site?
The, no, the dimension is not provided.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hirschbahn?
Yeah, I was just looking at the, the findings for the variance application. And to me, it's not at all clear. And I'll tell you why, and I'd like some clarification from staff. It says under the findings, this is page seven, the code section 940600 requires that all four of the conditions be met to do a variance. They have to be met to do a variance. In other words, you have to be able to say, this condition is met, we can, we can grant the variance. So if you look at, if you look at condition number three, the condition is the granting of the variance will be materially detrimental to the public health or et cetera, or injurious to property. Now, why would you make a finding that it's going to be materially detrimental to the public health and then grant the variance based on that finding? That just seems counterintuitive to me.
I believe that's an error. I believe the correct finding should be, will not be
Yeah, so I've confirmed that against the code, Madam Chair. That was a typo in the staff report. The actual legal finding to be made by the Planning Commission is that it will not be materially detrimental.
Okay, and are we seeing, is staff saying? So, but, okay, assuming it's, 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 it's a typo. And then you go on to say the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental. And then you say this finding cannot be met. Oh, can be met, I'm sorry. Got it. This finding can be met, this finding cannot be met. Okay, thank you for clarifying. And to Commissioner Marutse, I don't understand that they're vending doors. They're more like showcases because from what the description staff gave us is no one can open that door, take something out and go and buy it. It's they go up to the counter and say, "I want that blue bottle that's in the door, in the window over there."
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One more question for Ms. Perez. Is there a reason we didn't receive the minutes from the Architectural Review Committee?
Were they not provided?
They were not provided.
Oh, there was no specific reason. They should have been.
Thank you. This matter, there being no more questions of staff. This matter is before the public and we will open the public.
Chair, I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Irvin.
Yeah, just one more quick question. In the last 10 years, have we provided a variance or anything similar to this? I don't know if I heard that earlier. But have we provided that, any type of variance similar to this for any gas station within the last 10 years?
I am not aware that we have. I don't believe that we have.
Is there, Ms. Flynn or maybe David, can you confirm that?
We'll take a look and see some of the case history while the public hearings occur and we can respond in just a few.
Madam Chair, can we request that the minutes on this specific issue from Architectural Review be sent to us electronically right now?
Yes, we can do that.
The public hearing on this item is open. And if the applicant's here, you have 10 minutes and you'll have three minutes for rebuttal.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Jacob Glaze. I work for Kimling Horn Associates. We are the representative and applicant for Walmart Stores, Inc. on this project. Appreciate all the discussions that have been brought forth to you, brought forth by you guys tonight regarding the, the questions to the actual code. I would like to say that staff has been extremely helpful through this whole process. And I thank you for staff's work through this. Necessarily, as you see our case tonight, we, we don't agree with the, the code that has been set forth of the 700 square feet. One of the commissioners had made a statement about the building size. of the commissioners had made a statement about the building size. We are currently rolling this, rolling this proto. Someone said proto, so I'll stick with that word. Rolling this prototype of fuel station out across all of California at multiple stations and facilities. We have a couple of open facilities, not specific in California. This is something new that Walmart's trying to roll out, but more or less in, in the south, maybe in the Texas area. We found that this style of kiosk, it works the best. It has all the requirements that we need and the footprint that we need. So to answer the question that was presented, this is our, our standard that we go with. This is the standard that they roll out, and it's honestly the standard that I'm working on, 12 under, 12 under, 12 other fuel stations in the state of California now, four in Washington, two in Oregon, and 16 in Utah. So this is the, the standard kiosk that we do go with. We can increase our kiosk size to a standalone 1,440 square foot building. We do not think that it is needed at this facility. It's a, it's a totally different style of layout, and given how we've looked at other kiosks and other fuel station operations inside of the city, we do not feel that this is, this is applicable here. In terms of all the comments that we received from Architectural Review Committee, we feel that we've done our best to address them all. We thought that the landscape burn was a good idea, the right turn pocket that we had met with engineering, as well as fire on, as well as with the Architectural Review Committee and some of their comments. Again, and I think we're, we're all on the same page with the exception of the, the 700 square feet. I've, I've built a lot of these, and this is the first time I've come on to a project where I've been told that my building's too small. I usually get told my building's too big. And so I appreciate the staff bringing that up. I am here to answer any questions, should you guys need any. And I would like to say one other thing. This site was developed by Walmart back in 20, or I'm sorry, 2006. So if I got my dates right, it's been vacant for 15 years. And unfortunately, this is, unfortunate, I mean, that's unfortunate, that's lost tax revenue to the city, it's lost employment, it's lost opportunity. And we feel that this is a great opportunity for this parcel that has not been developed, and that's why Walmart owns it. Walmart would like to develop it. That's why the, we presented the case here tonight, and hopefully you guys let us see it through. We, we have plans and are wanting to start our plan checks in the middle to the city, that way that hopefully we can open this thing in first or second quarter of next year, start generating tax revenue, have jobs out there, provide you guys the opportunity to get some, some more gas, at different options, and have, just be another asset to the, to the shopping center itself. Like I said, that's currently sat vacant for 15 plus years and probably will, if this doesn't get developed. So, again, my name is Jacob Glaze. I'm here to answer any questions. And again, I appreciate you guys hearing our case tonight, as well as staff's presentation. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing no members of the public.
Madam Chair, there's Tracy Ins score. Raise your hand up.
Oh, if you would, Ms. Ins score?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tracy Ins score, and I'm an attorney on behalf of Walmart. And just to echo my colleagues' comments about the site, I just wanted to highlight one of the key differences about this site, specifically in relation to the size of the convenience kiosk and our request for a variance. And specific to finding number one, with regard to, you know, different circumstance that applies to this site, I would just like to point out that unlike most other freestanding fueling stations and convenience stores within the city, this proposed site is really the only one located within a large, more regional shopping center. I'm actually from Palm Springs, born and raised, and so I'm familiar with the area, and I know that the, for example, the Von's Rimrock Station, the Smoke Tree 76 Station, while those are located in shopping centers, they don't have the same drive-through food options, such as the McDonald's or Del Taco in this site, where convenient food and beverage sales are already offered. So that's part of the reason why there is a reduced need for sale square footage within the kiosk here. And most of the customers here are anticipated to utilize the fuel station as part of the same trip to one of those other businesses, such as to Walmart, or one of the drive-throughs. And I would also just like to point out with regard to a different circumstance that might assist the commission in making that first required finding, this parcel actually straddles the edge of compatibility zone B1 and Zone C of the airport land use compatibility plan. And so that plan does, among other things, call for a reduced square footage where possible. And so I would just like to point out that that is another sort of special or unique circumstance that might assist in making that first finding. So we just thank staff and the commissioners for their time, and we're here if you have any questions.
Are there any questions of the applicant or the applicant's attorney? Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Glaze, what I was hoping to hear is that Walmart has done a tremendous design research on the design of the prototype, and believe that it's a much more secure design for the employee in the after hours, and therefore, this is a display rather than having an in-house store where after hours it may become a security issue. Did I just make that up, or is there any part of that that's true?
Yes, Commissioners, I assume I can answer right now. Yes, Commissioner Song, that is a complete true statement, exactly where you had voiced. It is more beneficial to have somebody inside of a building than to have the locked doors than are, have the ability, availability for someone to open the doors and come in there. There is also a comment that was represented, if I could go back to the Architectural Review Committee by staff, or by the Architectural Review Committee, and the fact that most of our kiosks are operated where you can actually open the door, grab the item, and then walk over and purchase it. Architectural Review Committee was against that item, so we have made changes to the concept here and had those doors, are there no longer doors that can be opened, per se? That's why it's more of a presentation-style door, which helps with the terms of what was called shoplifting other items. We don't experience that at other sites, but we have made that recommendation to assist with the Architectural Review Committee's comments. But yes, to answer your question, I would assume that this would definitely be a safer concept for the associate, because they are in a locked building, you don't have people coming in there as well.
In, in the design, is there an actual operable sort of metal screen that it's an additional protection, or is it the glass is the final finished material on the face of the building?
Um, in terms of the, the actual kiosk, the.
The glass display?
The glass display. Those are, those are glass panels, but they, it's not just your simple little glass panel that you have on a window. They're double-pane glass windows that are, that are hard to.
Right, right. No, I'm sorry. It's just that you have a big fascia header, so I, I thought perhaps it was like a overall, overhead roll-up sort of security screen in addition to the glass, but I believe you're saying that's not the case. Glass is the final envelope of that wall.
That would be correct.
Okay. Could, could you clarify for me the driveway width behind the parking areas? Do you have 24 feet?
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I apologize. Go ahead.
Yeah, and because you have done so many that I can't even list on so many states, the configuration and the turning radius and waiting and going around has been vetted through, correct?
Correct. So we'll answer the first question, Commissioner. We do have the 24 width requirement, as, as noted. The, and we did a walkthrough with this with traffic. City of Palm Springs requested that we meet with them to go through their traffic and their queuing and everything else, so that way they felt good about the queue analysis. And so we did meet with your guys in-house city staff to go through that. We had, had some conditions as Mrs. Perez had mentioned about from Fire Department, to make sure that we're meeting those widths. So to answer your questions, we feel that we've met the width requirements, as well as met with the applicable people at the city. And then in terms of the actual circulation and element, yes, this is something that's been vetted. We come up with these concept plans for multiple layouts on these sites, and then these get vetted by not only the store manager, but also by Walmart operations, by their internal field team, by the people that drop off the fuel trucks, and then ultimately just their, their customer service. So there's multiple people at Walmart back in Benville, as well as out here at the actual store that vet these fuel stations and the locations and the layout and everything else, because you're not gonna, we don't want to put something on the ground that all of a sudden you're gonna go to once and then not want to go to again, because that doesn't serve well for repeat sales and everything else. So to answer your question, my, sorry for my long wooden answer, but yes, it's been vetted by multiple people.
Okay, and two, two more questions. You, I, I believe the proposed pylon sign that is in the package for Ramon Road is to be higher than what is already there. Could you not keep the same height and then have adjacent, two adjacent tenant on a single row?
I, Commissioner, I would have to probably pull up my plan right there, and maybe I can get back to you on the exact thing. The main reason for the height increase, and Ms. Perez, correct me if I'm wrong on anything I say here, Architectural Review Committee requested that we add an additional eight inches to the existing sign, or something of that sort, to help, to help with view corridor. So it's actually a response to Architectural Review Committee.
Okay, and last question is, how often do you clean power wash or the surfaces of, of the gas station?
So there, hopefully it's not, so I'll answer that in twofold. So you can't power wash the gas station, because that's a whole environmental concern. So hopefully, so I'll answer that. But in terms of actually the cleaning and everything else, there is an associate there that is responsible to go ahead and maintain and pick up the trash and everything else. And so I would say it's done, it's done every day, but it's probably on a, a couple-hour basis to make sure that they remove the trash and pick it up, all those different items. So it's, we, it's reoccurring daily maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Glaze, does this gas station provide free water and free air to those using it, to its patrons?
Yes, Commissioner Roberts, it does. We have that designated on our, I don't know if Ms. Perez can pull up the plan itself, but we do have that designated as construction note 16 on our site plan. We do have a pullover area for them to go ahead and grab free water and air. That's actually a state requirement that we provide that.
Yeah, I understand that, except for many gas stations are simply not providing it. So Walmart's in agreement to provide that in perpetuity. I, I just quickly read the minutes from our Architectural Review Committee, and the only note that I see there, and they're wanting to deny your closed kiosk, is they have concerns about people standing in line in the heat. Have you made any provisions for that with respect to misting or shading? I mean, I guess shading is solved already by your canopy, but given the extreme heat that we have here in the desert, have you made any provisions for things like misting around the kiosk if they are in fact having to wait a turn to talk with somebody behind glass?
Yes, Commissioner Roberts, as far as actually misting or anything else, we have, we have not made those modifications to the plan. We, we understand the comment that was presented to us by Architectural Review Committee, but we've done this project, this project layout in, in multiple places. I actually am one of the people that enjoy the heat down in Palm Springs. I think it's a nice change to go out there. I actually have sinus issues, so it's, it's helped with my sinuses. But with that, we've, I have one of these fuel stations going in Calexico right now, which gets a lot more hot and windier. We have a lot of these out in Arizona, in Texas, and other areas that we do not have misters or anything else. And in terms of somebody actually waiting, this is a, this is a kiosk, and they're gonna serve your, your standard stuff that you would get at a kiosk, whether it's, it's a candy bar, a bag of chips, a protein shake, or something like that, not protein, like a, a smoothie, one of those naked smoothie things or something else. I don't think that they would be waiting in line that long. I, I would hope that if someone's not buying the entire kiosk, where they're, they're gonna be waiting in line a certain amount of time. So to answer your question, we have not, but we do not think that it is necessary based on our past experience and the fact that people just wouldn't be buying that many things at this. Hopefully that answers your question, Commissioner.
It did, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Glaze, I'm gonna add, I've.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yeah, two questions. Did I understand you correctly that the only reason people are not allowed in the kiosk is that our Architectural Review Commission didn't want them to do that?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
So, uh, that'll be a staff question later. And then, go ahead, Mr. Hirschbun, and then I'll have one more question.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the attorney. Is it Ms. Ins score? Is that right?
Tracy Ins score, yes.
Ins score. Okay. Your first comment about finding one, you're saying the, the difference in the surroundings is that there's already fast food, drive-up outlets in, within that parking lot area, and that sets it apart from other freestanding gas stations. And I understand that particular line of thinking, but I was wondering if you had any additional interpretations of variant, of finding number two, and if there's any way in your mind that that finding can be met?
Oh, certainly. Just one moment while I access that. All right, of course, my computer picks this moment to freeze.
Well, Chair Wermuth, if you want to go back, and then we can give Ms. Ins score a chance to review that.
So, for Mr. Glaze, following up with that, what's submitted to us right now is a kiosk that can't be entered, but that could be changed by you if we, we did a, a condition. Is that something you can change back?
Yes, Madam Chair. So just to, just for one point of clarity, the kiosk, actually internal to the kiosk will only be the, the employee itself. What the, what Architectural Review Committee had stated is that the kiosk itself has the glass panels that are across it that are represented as, as one of the commissioners said, as showcase doors. What was made reference by Architectural Review Committee is that you couldn't open those showcase doors and grab items out and go to the kiosk to purchase. So those are now all glass panels and not accessible doors.
Okay, so it isn't that they, the public could enter your fourth, 400 square foot kiosk and pick something up and give it to the person inside. It's, they would always be either getting it through glass doors or being handed it?
That would be correct.
Okay. Um, I think we're waiting for Ms. Ins score. My other questions, oh, Commissioner Alanian? And then Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Glaze, you, can you explain to us for this prototype, what types of products are sold? And juxtapose that, or contrast that with, if you went with your, I believe you said it was 1,440 square foot, what would be sold? What lines of goods would be sold with that?
Yeah, Matt, thank you, Commissioner. In terms of the items that would be sold, there, I'm gonna say they're more or less the, the same exact items that you would, you would get at one to the other. I would say it's more of a variety. Inside of standalone kiosks that you see today, we do not provide any sort of, any sort of alcohol sales that are here. If we did a standalone building, we may look at putting alcohol sales in there. Sometimes we're allowed to do that, sometimes we're not. But in terms of actual variety, it would just be a different variety of, of items and goods, similar to, I mean, what you would see at a, another gas station. But it's just, it's not a, it's not substantially. But it's just, it's not a, it's not substantially different to what you see today. You'll be able to go to this kiosk and, and get your, your energy jinks, your chips, your soda, your health, your healthy goods, or you can go and get your junk food. It's, it's kind of the, the thing that you would prefer to get at a, at a kiosk. And hopefully that, Commissioner, that answers your question.
Uh, that does answer my question, although it does seem to be contrary to what I've observed in others in the community, which is, uh, for those that have a larger footprint, they expand their personal goods, you know, shampoo and, uh, toothbrushes and things like that, as well as aspirin and a whole host of goods, as well as then moving to other supplies, cleaning supplies and things like that. But you would just have more chips and soda and tobacco and candy?
I mean, there might be, there may be a little bit more variety in terms of, in terms of your cleaning goods, but keeping in mind, I think this is, this is adjacent to the existing Walmart, and we're not trying to compete with the Walmart that's there currently. So trying to provide the same amount of goods is, is not really beneficial to us. So it's more or less a, a quick grab and go.
Okay. And my other question is, as you mentioned earlier, speaking earlier, that it's a shame that this wasn't done in 2006, because now the city has lost revenue and sales starts that there was less than the last 15 years. I'm sure that you do extensive amounts of research and market studies to establish where your shoppers come from and things like that. So am I understanding or deducing from that, that the lost sales opportunity, you wouldn't have just shifted, um, sales from one place in the community to another, that these will all be people coming from out of town who have not been going to other gas stations and to other convenience marts in Palm Springs during the intervening 15 years? And this will genuinely be new revenue to the city?
I think, Commissioner, I, I think it would be a mix of, mix of the two. There's, there's people from outside of, outside of Palm Springs that generally would come to this, they come to this Walmart and shop. There's, of course, the local cities around there. So it provides them an opportunity to, as, as Tracy had said, there presents an opportunity to come to the gas station and get gas. Maybe they can stop at one of the restaurants in the center, and then they can also stop and get their fuel. So there's an opportunity to get outside sources of revenue. There also is an opportunity to get revenue or, there also is an opportunity, yes, we will necessarily compete with maybe some of the other local gas stations that are, that are in the city. But I think that competition helps provide, I mean, it just, it provides competition and it helps you guys get more, maybe more affordable gas and everything else. But I, we do think that there would be outside sales generated from outside the city with the inclusion of this, uh, with this, as well as, I mean, there's, there's fees, everything that we have to pay for plan check, there's impact fees, there's, there's construction dollars, there's, there's other revenue sources that, and there's, of course, employment as well, that all come from, from this.
Okay. And then finally, you mentioned a couple of times how this was the prototype that this worked the best for Walmart. Walmart had determined from other locations that this works best for them, and this is what they want. Understanding that this commission appreciates Walmart as being a great community partner and it really provide all kinds of programs and Walmart is really a go-to partner in terms of community events. Understanding that, can you put it in, can you define the benefits to the community? Why this prototype is the best for the community, not just the best for Walmart? Because our obligation here is to look out for the needs of the community and for the best interest of the community, not for one retailer within the community.
Yes, Commissioner, I'd be happy to address that comment. And I'll do the, do my best. And if I don't get there, definitely let me know. So as of right now, this, as I mentioned before, this property has sat vacant since 2006, and it continues to sit vacant. With the inclusion of this fuel, part of that parcel will be developed. If we were to increase, or let's say, we can fit a standalone building in here as well as this canopy, we, we've tried it a couple of different ways and it hasn't worked out in terms of the site layout. But if for some reason we were able to make it fit, it's going to take up that entire parcel, and that entire parcel now is fully dedicated to fuel. If we were to leave it as we have now, it leaves opportunity for future development of that other parcel. And so being able to utilize that other parcel for future development, as well as being able to utilize this fuel, it brings an opportunity for additional opportunities in the city, as well as opportunities for, for tax revenue and everything else. And so I, I look at it, I look at it this way, if, if I can pack everything into, uh, not pack, maybe this isn't the right word choice, but if I can fit everything on the parcel that I need to fit it on, I'm going to do my best to minimize my amount of disturbance just as, as I would. If, if I can get everything in a smaller building, I'll get everything in a smaller building, which we feel that we can do here, which leaves opportunity for that other parcel to be developed in the future. And I can tell you that usually when you put a gas station, there's an opportunity that it drives people to drive through that part of the area or that part of the center. And now you have a more viable piece of property that's sitting right next to it that someone might say, hey, I want to drop a, a drive-through coffee shop, or I want to put a standalone coffee shop in there because there's more people that are looking at this opportunity. So it just, I mean, it, it helps with, with the potential for future opportunity and development. That would be my off-the-cuff answer, but I'm happy to dive into that more should you, should you do refer, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Irvin, you had your hand up.
Oh, yeah, um, I guess this is a question for the gentleman. Commissioner Sung kind of mentioned the model change was kind of to protect the workers. Is that correct?
Commissioner Irvin, I would say that if you were to have somebody that stands inside of a building that's fully encased and not allowing somebody else to get an access there, I'm not a police officer by any means, but I would feel more safe and I feel that it's a safer environment for the employee, that would be correct.
Do, do you guys have anything from any of your research to show that that is effective or that robberies have occurred at any other locations?
I, Commissioner, I, I don't know if I have the, the backing to back that. I might ask the, I, to answer your question, I, I don't have the backing, I would just, I'm making an assumption, but I would, again, I would assume that if you have somebody that's in a closed area versus somebody that's in a wide-open area that has direct access, I feel that would be safer. But to have data, I do not.
Okay. And then, um, for your, another question for you too, how many other styles do you have that aren't available? Of kiosses or, uh, kiosses or stores or different size-wise? How many other different models do you have available?
Yes, Commissioner, we usually roll out two separate models. The model that you see in front of you is, is our, what we would call an, an inline fuel station. And then the other model would be a standalone fuel station where you would actually have a, a separate kiosk, not underneath of the canopy. So it would require if somebody wanted to go and access the actual kiosk, they would walk across the drive aisle, or they would walk through other areas to a separate standalone building. But what you see right now is called an inline, so the building's inline and the other one would be a standalone. So two separate variants, of course, modified to reflect architecture and the landscape and everything else that's in the center of an area.
And, and, and what would those square feet be of each one of the different? I know that one is, is 400, what is the other?
Uh, the one, the one presented in front of you, Commissioner, is 440, and the other one is 1,440.
Okay. Would, um, so the, what you guys are building in California, prior to the change that you guys have made, was it 1,200 square feet?
Walmart's goal in California right now is that we're rolling out 440s to, to every single fuel station. That is, what we've seen is that the best for, for the shopping centers that we've rolled them out in, we don't prefer to go with a 1,440.
I, I guess my question is, prior to the, the rollout of the 400 square foot, were the other locations in California 1,400 square feet?
Yes, Commissioner, Walmart actually has not done a fuel station rollout for, for many years. Sam's, I know Sam's is a different vendor, Sam's is the one that usually had the fuel. Walmart has not rolled out fuel on this kind of terms in, in 10-plus years. And in terms of way back when, they weren't, they were kind of off and ends and stuff was changing back then. So to answer your question directly, there wasn't a, a standard set forth.
Okay. And then also, one more question. I think you said a little bit earlier, when you were speaking, you guys have no problem with size, you're usually always told to make it smaller. So would that current property location you have there in Palm Springs, would that be able to support that 1,400 square feet?
Commissioner, to answer your question, we have not run the, the model to reflect that it would, based on our initial, sorry, let me take that back real fast if you don't mind. We have looked at the model, we do not feel that it's, it's the best model for this area. The 1,440, as, as I was saying earlier to Commissioner Ella, was that it would take up that neighboring parcel to the south and it would kill the development opportunity there. And so in doing so, it's, it's taking up more land than we think that is needed. And so it, the economic model would not be as, as promising should we roll out a 1,440 versus a 440.
Right, so it, it's kind of just something that you guys kind of decided is a better idea business model, right?
We, we prefer that it's a better business model, as well as allows for other development with inside of the center that, um, because if you, if you look back at the site plan, imagine I'm taking up another thousand square feet of that property to this, that, that empty parcel to the south. If I took up another thousand or 2,000 square feet of a rectangular box of that area, it's not going to leave enough room for any other development and such. So you're going to have this wide-open area that's never going to be used, and we just, we didn't think it feasible for this.
All right, thank you.
Inscore, ready?
Yes, I am, I'm unfrozen now, thank you for waiting. So to address Commissioner Hirschfahl's question, yes, with regard to finding number two, in addition to the findings that staff made that this finding can be met, if this project is consistent with the general plan, generally consistent with the zoning, Commissioner, as you mentioned, its proximity to these other uses within the shopping center is a significant community benefit in that it allows, not only for greater convenience, but for those vehicle trips to essentially be captured, in that people who are coming to the Walmart or to one of the fast food restaurants, then also stop for fuel on the same trip, thereby reducing vehicle miles traveled within the city, which is a significant benefit, as well as, as, as my colleague mentioned, Mr. Glaze mentioned, capturing those sales as well. So currently, any customers who are coming from any of the East Valley Cities would likely do their shopping and then turn around and probably get fuel in Cathedral City or at one of the fuel stations off of the freeway. And so this would be an opportunity to capture those sales. And so for those reasons, because there's really no other shopping center within the city that has this, this scale of offerings, because of those factors, we feel that the defining, or that the variance rather, can be met with regard to the reduced square footage, as it really is sort of ancillary to the existing Walmart store and simply just does not have the same need for a greater, you know, a greater number of convenience offerings and, and sales square footage within the kiosk itself.
Thank you.
Going in the same, did you have follow-up questions, Commissioner Hirschfahl?
Well, specifically, you know, if we're, if I am hypothetically inclined to favor a variance, uh, and I have to find that finding two can be met, you're saying the reason is that this site is unique in Palm Springs in that there's all these other uses within the shopping center and also that it's ancillary to the main store? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct as to the justification for the reduced square footage. And those are in addition to the findings that staff made that, that this finding can be met and that it is desirable for the community.
Well, actually, number two, it says this finding cannot be met.
Let's see, the version I have says finding two-
There's two sets of twos. The second one is the variance that relates to special privilege being granted. That's on page eight.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
You're looking at page six, Ms. Inscore.
Oh, I see, my apologies. So yes, with regard to not granting a special privilege, that is correct, that there are no similarly situated shopping centers within the city that have the same commercial offerings.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Inscore, following up on that, can you repeat what you talked about with the airport being in between two compatibility zones?
Certainly, Madam Chair. So this site is sort of straddled, straddles the edge of compatibility zone B1 and compatibility zone C of the airport land use compatibility plan. And so as, as the commissioners are aware, that plan calls for certain design requirements, you know, no flashing lights, nothing that could interfere with aircraft. And it also calls for risk reduction building design, which, among other things, can include reduced square footage. And based on our research, this was the only proposed fueling station that would be located within these, these specific zones. And so that would just provide another basis to support the reduced square footage for the kiosk specifically.
Thank you. One more question for Mr. Glaze, and that is, are you providing bathrooms?
Yes, Madam Chair, bathrooms will be provided as part of this, this facility.
Are they in the kiosk, are they located in the kiosk?
Um, Ms. Prez, I don't know if you can pull up a floor plan by any means. If not, they are externally accessed with a, with a key that is provided by the associate. So you'd have to walk up to the associate, ask to utilize the restroom key, and then you could go utilize restroom key and then give that key back to them.
So they're adjacent to the kiosk?
They would be part of the overall building footprint of the kiosk, but they would be externally accessed, Madam Chair.
Are they included in the 440 feet?
Yes, Madam Chair, they are.
Okay, thank you. This matter, the public hearing is closed, there being no more questions, and the matter is before the commission. Commissioner Marutse?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was reading the, the minutes from the 5/18/21 AAC meeting, and there was two things that, that were mentioned that I don't think we've brought up yet.
Can I ask where you found them? I couldn't find them.
You know, Mr. Newell emailed them to us within the last half hour. So this is the second attachment. Says Chair Jakeway is not in favor of the glass cases facing outwards and thinks the building should be larger with a 750 square foot minimum to accommodate people inside the building instead of the proposed configuration. And then the last paragraph is, Jakeway, seconded by McCoy to deny the project as presented, based on the project not meeting zoning requirements of the 750 square foot building size and AAC recommendation that display case not be visible from outside the building. So that's an issue that hasn't seemed to be raised at all, and it probably should have been somewhere in the notes from staff. So there is concern that the AAC had with all of this, these display cases being visible, even though now you can't open the case and, and, you know, obtain the item, you're sealing it up, but that's still visible from the outside of the building. And that was the motion that was their reasoning, one of their, their reasons for denying the project, in that they do feel that it should be big enough to accommodate people inside. So, given that, I, you know, I think this is an issue where we have to decide whether or not we agree with the Architectural Review Committee in terms of granting this. I don't know yet if I'm, I'm willing to, to ignore their comments as relates to that.
Commissioner Roberts? General discussion, one round, and then I'm going to go toward motions, and we'll go through the three items separately.
Okay, well, I'm going to-
Okay, well, I'm going to not make a motion, but I'm going to give my reasonings for why. I think we can make the findings that are necessary to approve this. I think the most important finding to be made here is that there's no material detrimental impacts from this. I happen to believe the applicant that it is probably safer, especially given the remoteness of this kiosk, to not have people come in and subject a cashier to a potential burglary or problem. I think people walking up to a well lit window is probably a safer environment. I disagree with the AAC that having showcase windows with products is a problem. They don't really say why it's a problem. I guess, I guess what they're alluding to here is the aesthetics of it. But I drove around looking at existing kiosks or convenience stores, and generally you can see products inside the windows when you're there in the station. And generally, the windows of the station kiosks are flooded with images of what's inside. So I don't think that that's materially more aesthetically displeasing. Again, this is a gas station and it's remote and it's not something you're really going to see too much of unless you're there. In other words, I don't think it's going to have any impact on Ramon or people driving by. You're not going to really even understand, you're not going to know what's in this kiosk until you're pretty much standing in front of it. So I don't think aesthetics is a real issue here. I don't think we're granting, I think we can make the finding that we're not granting a special privilege. Again, I think this is unique. This isn't somebody coming in, this isn't Taco Bell now finding a small parcel next to Walmart to put in a tiny kiosk selling food. This is an extension of what Walmart's already doing and it's an extension of Walmart. It's simply another product they're selling. To me, it's no different if there was a garden center that you had to walk a few steps to rather than getting into it through the front door. So I don't see that we're granting any special privilege. I think we're simply granting an extension to Walmart, which I think clearly offers the public something they very much want. I also think that this is something we want. There aren't many gas stations in that area. From what I can recall, there's really only a Shell station that's pretty close. It's only about a block away and it's difficult to get into and it's crowded and it's a poorly designed station. I think giving a second opportunity for gas on that street makes a lot of sense. I'm also guessing because it's Walmart, it's going to be competitively priced. And I also think that adding a gas station to this gigantic parking lot is a great idea. It's going to reduce car trips. If people are coming in and getting groceries and the things that they get at Walmart, how convenient it would be for them, much like Costco having a gas station. And Costco, by the way, has virtually the same kiosk except they don't sell anything. And it gives people the opportunity to get two things done within one parking lot and that's going to reduce environmental effects, cars making multiple trips. It creates a great convenience for those that are already going to Walmart. And I think one of the things that Walmart serves in general is that they provide an enormous variety of things to its shoppers. And again, that's a good thing. It also provides very competitive pricing, which I think is extremely important to our community. They're providing bathrooms, they're providing air and water. I just don't see a reason to not do this. My ears are wide open to my colleagues, but I don't think granting this variance is going to have any negative impact whatsoever on the community, on the property, on the environment, or anything else for that matter. So I'll leave it there for now and I'm very anxious to hear from my colleagues.
Before we get speeches, maybe we could get a show of hands of people who are inclined to see this the way Commissioner Roberts sees this.
Madam Chair, before we get into a discussion about that, could I just address the commission briefly on this?
Why?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I do think this is before the commission at this point.
I just wanted to provide some advice with respect to the variance if the commission wouldn't mind.
What I'd like to do is just get a sense of where people are at before we get advice about the variance. It may be moot if nobody is inclined to want to support the concept that Commissioner Roberts has. If I could, so that's a raised hand from Commissioner Song, from Commissioner Hirschbein, and from me, and Commissioner Lannion is both ways, and Commissioner Irvin is both ways, or is that a yes? And Commissioner?
Both ways about it.
We've got three people that are both ways about it and four that are seeing this in the same way. So I'd like to hear from somebody who's not, who's got a different point of view.
I'm sure I'd like to hear from our attorney.
But I just, I'd really like to hear from the commission first and then I'll go to our attorney. Commissioner Lannion, can I call on you?
Yes. Much of, if not just about all of what Commissioner Roberts say resonate with me and they certainly sway me from the way I think I was originally looking at this. Here's my concern or what I see on the other side, and that is that in canvassing the gas stations and the associated mini-marts with them or convenience stores with them in the city, what I see is that small ones, a couple hundred square feet, so tobacco, cigarettes, sodas, candy, chips, and that's kind of it, pork rinds maybe for a little variety. When you get to the larger ones, the ones that I saw, there are a couple that, as I counted ceiling tiles and floor tiles and estimated the square footage, when you get around 700 or 800 square feet, suddenly they sell more products and the food that they sell, they sell fresh fruit, they sell packaged sandwiches or salads, things like that. They show more juices, milk, eggs and some of the different products. And I am very aware of the city's attempt in the last couple of years, valid efforts to move to a healthy, healthy living act of, healthy eating, active living type of city and to encourage people to take better care of themselves and partner nutrition. People being people, and when you're hungry, you're hungry, and if there's nothing else, I mean, a candy bar. If there are other things, I think that when people are offered a choice, they will, some of them will choose to eat better. But if that choice isn't offered because you only have enough square footage for chips and sodas, that's what you're going to have. So that kind of perplexes me. I'm also concerned that we have other facilities that have been developed that have not, have not built smaller, they've built the full size facilities. And again, I think I mentioned four of them. I don't know though, without the information, I don't know why, I don't know if they were interested in building smaller facilities, but they followed the ordinance, in which case it would distress me to grant this variance for Walmart. Nonetheless, I think Commissioner Roberts makes, and Ms. Inscore make well reasoned arguments and demonstrate why this center is different from others and why it should be treated differently and why we could justifiably make the findings in favor of the variance. And those are my thoughts on the issue. Oh, and one other thing, I'm still a little bit perplexed by the size just from a visual impact, and that's something that I expected ARC would pick up, but it didn't and I haven't heard talk about is, is the building size so de minimis that suddenly you look as if you've got, you're putting a mushroom on a slab of beef? I mean, it doesn't look out of place and out of context without seeing, that was really a bad analogy. Nonetheless, without seeing the whole center, I have the feeling that that might be the case and there might look like a kiosk in the middle of an extra large parking lot. But nobody else has seemed to address that and I would defer to the input from the Architecture Review Committee, and if they aren't concerned, then I'm not.
Mr. Priest, do you still have advice for the commission?
Yes, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind. I want to reiterate the point that I had made earlier. I've been hearing throughout this public hearing, a lot of discussion about policy issues, you know, the convenience, sales, vehicle miles, travel, development, things like that. And there may be some very good policy reasons why a minimum requirement of 750 square feet for a convenience store to gas station is not the right policy. The fact is that the city council has made policy and it is a minimum of 750 square feet, and that is the baseline that mandates compliance there. Now, that can be addressed or varied through this variance process if the findings can be made. I would also point out that finding one in particular, I would note, is special circumstances applicable to the property, size, shape, topography, location or surroundings, where strict application of the zoning code would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by others in the vicinity under an identical zone classification. So if you've got another M1 property that wants to build a gas station and we would require them to put in 750 square foot convenience store, to not have to require that here, to make finding one, you would have to show something different about the property.
You're ahead of us, you're really ahead of us.
I'm sorry.
You're not there. I do agree with you that the main issue before us will be, can we make the variance findings if people want to? But you're way ahead of us and I think you're, I think you're taking a position.
I'm advising as to the findings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschbein has his hand up and then Commissioner Marutse.
Yeah, well, I mean, I started out the discussion by asking staff if there was any known negative impacts that would accrue to the city if there was a smaller than mandated size to this building, and the answer was no. So we kind of got that out of the way early on. And then that, then we go to the findings and that's going to be the crux of whether we can approve this or not. And so that's why my question to Ms. Inscore about her interpretation of the findings, and I know she's not our city attorney and doesn't represent the city on that, but I was just interested to see what the applicant had to say about that finding because, again, that's, that's going to be the critical knuckle around everything else will revolve. And we know that three and four can be met based on the staff report. And then the question is, do the specifics of that shopping center and the offerings of that shopping center create a unique situation that would allow us to make a finding that this can be an exception to the zoning code under a variance? And I think from my point of view, that's what we need to focus on. And I mean, I think you could understand based on what I've said, where I come down on it, but I'd be interested to know whether anybody else thinks that we can make that finding that it meets those requirements based on, there's already vegetables in Walmart, there's already other convenience items, they don't want to compete with themselves. You know, there's all these specifics to that site. And does anybody else think that that's an argument that can be made to support a finding? That's sort of my challenge to the rest of the commissioners because that specifically is what's going to allow us to approve it if we want to.
And that's, I think that's the question I'd like people to address. Commissioner Marutse?
Yeah, just to address Commissioner Lannion's comment about the AAC. There was a statement.
No, 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 I really don't want to go to the AAC, I want to go to the variance issue and can you make finding number one?
All right, I'll get back to that. Later.
Okay. Other comments? I'm inclined to think we can, based on the particulars of the center itself.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt you? Commissioner Irvin had his hand up to make comments and I don't think he got to.
I didn't see a hand up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. For me, it seems like the other commissioners were given the opportunity to make comments. You asked us for our comments and then after Mr. Marutse spoke, it's like something changed. If we're all, we all should be able to have the opportunity to be able to make comments.
We can have general comments. I was trying to get us to the specific point we have to deal with to make a yes or no, yes or no decision on this. But if you wish to make general comments, I'll go back to Commissioner Marutse, let him make his general comments, and then I will come to you.
Yeah, the reason I brought up this Mayor, Member Walsh's comment, he was concerned of the kiosk layout and building design as a glass refrigerator. So then the question in my mind is AAC denied this for various reasons, mostly related to the kiosk. How does that specifically relate then to meeting these findings? Were they also trying to meet the findings? Was that part of their charter in terms of their decision? Because if they found reasons not to meet one of the findings, then that seems to me something we should consider. Otherwise, it's just a case of aesthetics. Oh, they don't like the glass refrigerator. There must be more to it than that. There has to be, there must be addressing findings in some way. Is that correct? Mr. Priest or staff?
Madam Chair, if I can respond. So the staff report presented to the Architectural Committee was relative to the Architecture Review findings. So we did note that they did have an inconsistency with zoning code standard, so they were aware of that issue. However, their findings are solely based on the Architecture Review criteria. And as you see, you know, relative to the composition of the building, they did not feel that the exterior display doors were appropriate for the design of the building.
And how would that relate to any of our findings then? Under which finding would that apply? This issue they raised, or the reasoning for it? Is it the condition of use permit or the variance?
Architecture Review criteria, so the last couple of pages.
No, I'm saying in terms of how would their conclusion?
We have a major architectural application in Corinbus, I believe.
Right. It's irrelevant to the CUP or the variance applications.
So it's irrelevant to both of those?
Correct.
And we don't have to make special findings for the major architectural application?
There is criteria, yes, that you should.
Okay, those are ones on page nine?
Yes.
Nine and 10. So none of those would be affected by their conclusion?
Those would be in addition to the conclusion. It would be, those are affected by their conclusion and we would have to see if we can make the findings.
Right, so that would be number two on page nine. It is not harmonious to the surrounding areas. It provides vending doors on the exterior elevation or a glass box of a vending machine. So anyhow, I just don't, I don't feel comfortable in dismissing their comments because they don't seem relevant to what we're concerned about. And I think they do. So that's why I'm focusing more on the comments of A A C as relates to the findings. Thank you.
But we would go to that after we made a decision. We wouldn't reach, we wouldn't reach the major architectural if we found that we couldn't. I'm just answering that. We wouldn't reach the major architectural until we found variance or not.
Anybody hear me?
Commissioner Irvin, you're on and now you're muted. And you're still muted.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I guess I have an interesting feeling about the about this. I just, I haven't seen anything or heard anything from either staff or the applicant that that is showing anything that's that would require any kind of special variance or anything special to be offered. So I would lean more towards what has been in writing. I think that we have more of a problem with if we're standing at the 750 square foot for the kiosk. It's something that needs to be changed in the future. That's something that maybe we can address after this. But for me, considering listening to both sides of the situation, I haven't seen anything that would lead me to go against anything to staff and also A A C asset. And to address the issue with the gas stations that are around the area, there is a 711 gas station that's exactly across the street from that location. A little bit down the road, there's a mobile gas station. And there's also the shelves there at the corner. So I don't think the request or the asked for the 750 square foot is that much of a stretch for them to be able to make that adjustment. They already have a model of a bigger location. I just don't see any reason to go against staff or A A C for nothing that I've seen that supports anything that says that this gas station is any special than anyone else.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirschbein, you have your hand up?
No, I don't.
Oh, you've got a yellow hand up.
I don't know what that is.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone else? Commissioner Olenian?
Yes, now that I've had the opportunity to think about it a little bit more and go back and read the exact language of the finding that we need to make. I referenced before what Commissioner Robertson and Ms. Inscore had said about how this is a different center and we could make the findings if we need to. No, we can't, I believe, because it doesn't deprive the subject property of any privileges enjoyed by anyone else. If anything, it would be granting special privileges to this applicant that nobody else enjoys. But applying the zoning ordinance as it currently stands strictly would not deprive this property of anything that is enjoyed by anybody else. And I agree just with every point that Mr. Irvin just made on the on the subject discussed.
Other comments, starting with the variance and the C U P. Commissioner, if, if there, Commissioner Song?
Okay, let's see if I went. I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Layan. I think this is a special accessory used to the main mothership store. And having this place have a retail convenience store of 750 means that it would be a major competition to the 711 and the A M P M and the Shell station that are already on Ramon. And to those businesses, I'm sorry, for the Walmart applicant, I don't want them to take more of those businesses of those businesses. So I would still, for the way I see it, I think that we have enough findings to grant the variant according to what Commissioner Roberts have said.
So in terms of the C U P and the variance, is there a motion? And I'm not going to the major architectural application. Do I have a motion from anyone here? Commissioner Roberts?
I'm happy to make one. I don't really sense where we're headed yet, but I'm I'm happy to make one to get the conversation started. I would, I would remove approval of the variance with the findings that I don't think we're materially, there's no material detrimental impacts to anyone or anything with by granting the variance. I don't think we're granting special privilege. Most places want to sell more, not less. This is a little bit of an anomaly that they want to do a smaller offering. I don't think I've ever heard of a application where they actually want to do less. It makes perfect sense to me because not a few hundred feet away, you can walk into a store and buy everything. I don't say this with prejudice, but I don't believe in trying to legislate what people buy in convenience stores. If people want to buy a Coke, great. If they want to buy kale, great. I think it's their business. But again, they can, with very, with great convenience, they can walk away from their car in the other direction and walk into Walmart and get anything they want. It's an entire grocery store. So again, I don't think we're granting special privilege. I don't think we're creating any detrimental impacts. So I can make the finding easily that why not grant this variance? It's, and although I very much respect the points about there are being other gas stations around, I think it's very convenient to have a gas station right next to a grocery store that's also an electronics store and also a clothing store. It makes for one stop shopping. And I think that's always a plus in urban design. So somewhere in all that, there was a motion, sorry.
Sorry, I'm muted. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Would, one question in terms of what makes this not a grant of special privilege is the, that this is on close to the airport and in the two, in the two compatibility zones where land uses, where buildings have been asked to be reduced in size. I think that's important as well. I don't know, either of you would accept that?
Accepted.
Yes, that sort of flies in the face of the zoning right there. That gets to Mr. Priest's concern that we're actually looking at policy, but I'd go with that.
Well, airport regulations, I don't think are policy. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the variance. I'd like to have discussion on it if there is discussion. Commissioner Marutse.
Regarding the meeting, the first finding under variance, I can't support that, and I agree with the staff's reasoning. Because regarding policy, we don't have any insight as to why the city council decided on a 750 square foot minimum. We have none. So we're just taking upon ourselves to say, well, you know, that seems rather arbitrary. Who knows why they did that? But we're going to go ahead for the reasons that have been given. They're very logical. But I don't feel comfortable making that finding because I just don't believe we have enough information as to why this policy was put in place in the first place.
Anyone else who's speaking against the motion? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, so I I think being able to make findings for one and two, if we do that, it's a stretch based on the wording of the zoning code. It's, it's, it's not really, I don't think when it was written, contemplates the kinds of rationales we're using. And I'm swayed by one of the recent commissioners' comments about special privilege. So I think it is a stretch. There's a certain policy we want to get to, but we're stretching the meaning of the words to get there. And usually, I'm kind of a strict constructionist when it comes to these kind of things. So I think I'm not going to support it.
So we have a motion and a second. Should we call the roll on it, or do we have a substitute motion? Let's call the roll.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Olenian?
No.
Commissioner Irvin?
No.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
No.
Commissioner Marutse?
No.
Chair Womack?
No, and I think it's too hard to make the findings. I'd like to. I would like to see this go through. I'd like to see a change in our code to allow it to go through. But I don't think, given the strict construction of variances, we can quite do it. I would, now I would entertain a motion to, I guess, since we did not approve it, the appropriate motion, Flynn, would be a motion to deny as with the findings as proposed by staff.
Yes, your motion would be to deny the major architectural application as the variance and conditional use permit have been denied.
Chair, may I ask a question? And this might be for you and it might be for Mr. Flynn or the attorney. If if we did not pass a resolution of denial, would that allow the applicant to then if the city were going to revisit the ordinance, the reason behind it, and do they really want it, and does the city council want to change it? And if that could be done in 60 to 90 days, the applicant might prefer to ask to have this continued until the city council has a chance to deny it or approve a change of the ordinance. Or if there's a denial, I'm presuming that there's a one year period of time or something during which they can't apply for similar, they can't reapply, if that makes sense?
The applicant or the planning commission actually could continue the item to a date uncertain on the major architectural application. What that would do is that would put that application on hold while the city goes forward in making changes to the zoning code. We could then schedule action on the item when the zoning code is approved or the amendment to the zoning code is approved.
Commissioner Roberts, you have your hand up?
Yes, Madam Chair. With respect to Commissioner Olenian, I think that is, if we're headed down the road of denial, perhaps offering the applicant a chance for continuance could also give them the opportunity to make the size adjustments. It probably really isn't that big of an adjustment to meet the zoning if we're going to be that strict with it. We should probably get the applicant's take on that. I think that could occur much faster for them if they desire than waiting for city council to adjust some zoning that was created eons ago. And our current city council may not even know why it was created. Maybe to avoid photomax, I don't know.
Photomax, ooh.
If the applicant is here, Mr. Clayz?
Yes, Madam Chair. We would prefer that our case be continued and not denied. Again, we would want to construct this project inside of the city. And denying this project would ultimately kill any chance of this project getting constructed. So if there's a way that we can continue this, we're happy to meet with staff after this and try to come up with a way to see if we can add an additional 300 square feet and try to figure that out. And to answer one of the questions, if I could, earlier of Commissioner Ella, we're happy to look at maybe going back to operations and seeing about providing some health, some healthier food choices. Because I know that was one of your key points there. But we would like to see the case continued and not denied because denial would kill any chance of this parcel being developed.
Flynn, making a motion to continue this and to a date uncertain, is that what we? So there, I would make a motion to continue the entire application to a date uncertain?
I would ask Mr. Priest, the planning commission has taken action on the variance and the conditional use permit pending changes to the zoning code.
Didn't take action on it.
Okay, sorry. Then I stand corrected. Then I would recommend that you continue these to a date uncertain.
I'll make that motion to continue to a date uncertain. And I let people discuss the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Who said that? Was it Commissioner Hirschbein? Is there discussion on this? I'd very much like to see this go through and find a way to to accommodate the gas station. I live very close to there. And I'd love to see a gas station in that area. I would probably not use a kiosk for items in that I have ample opportunity to do grocery shopping. But I'd like, in any way that we can, I'd like to assist this applicant.
Madam Chair, if I may, could I just ask for one point of clarification? The prior vote taken by the commission, that was not final action on the variance of the C U P?
It was, no, it was an action to to approve a variance with findings.
Okay.
It failed.
That's right. That's right, okay. Then it failed, and so now we just have the motion to continue this.
Right, I believe that's appropriate, which is
Yes, you are correct.
Which is one of the reasons we did, I hope, was one of the reasons I did it that way.
Yes, no, you're correct now.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we call the roll?
Second is Commissioner Olenian, is that correct?
I don't
Yes, I think Commissioner Hirschbein and I both seconded it.
If one of you wants to be the maker of the motion, that's fine with me, too. Commissioner Olenian, I'll have you the maker and Commissioner Hirschbein the seconder.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olenian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marutse?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Motion is approved to continue to date uncertain, seven zero.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have the next item before us. I'm going to see if we can get this item in before we take a break. The Coal Motor Lodge LLC for a conditional use permit and a land use permit to operate a restaurant and bar at the existing hotel property located at 2323 North Palm Canyon Drive. A very short staff report on this, please. Is there a staff member, or do we need a staff report on this?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we have Richard Bruno, who will be presenting this item.
We had had two motions, two people asked to move this to consent. So unless they're major questions, I'd really like the report to be short.
Based on the direction from the chair, let's just go ahead and turn it over to the commission. Mr. Bruno, my apologies, we'll have you present your items later. But for right now, let's go ahead and have questions of the staff and then open up the public hearing.
Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, I had one, which is to have staff suggest a potential condition in the event that the applicant has any outside music. And we can get to that later. So the public hearing is opened. Is the applicant here? You have 10 minutes to present. Is anyone here for the applicant? Mr. Newell, do we have anyone who's wished to, would like to speak on this issue?
It doesn't appear that the applicant is part of the meeting, Madam Chair, so hopefully staff can address any questions that the commission might have.
Are there any questions of staff? Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? No one volunteering to speak? The public hearing is closed?
Item of approval is presented.
I will second that, but I would like to include a standard condition that we have for outside music.
I accept that.
And that condition is in the chat, am I correct, Mr. Newell?
Correct. Basically, it's that there may be outdoor entertainment. However, it shall be limited to a noise level that is where customers can maintain a conversation.
That's acceptable to you, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
There being no discussion, can you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Layen?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven zero.
Thank you. Does anyone need a short break before we go to new business? Oh, we have two items, you need a short break. Can I just go, we'll take a 10-minute break?
Madam Chair, may I ask to be recused now from the next item due to professional proximity?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect that Ms. Song is recusing herself from item 4A.
Thank you. We will take a 10-
Recording stopped.
Thank you. We are still in public hearings to see the city of Palm Springs for a zone text amendment to amend. Chapter 94.5 of the zoning code to allow residential densities on properties that have historically been permitted on hotel or commercial sites. And the recommendation is to continue this to our regular meeting of October 13th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lan?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Song is not present. That's right. Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Motion is approved six zero.
Item two D is Moadland Homes LLC for a change of zone. Of an undeveloped 1.35 acre parcel from residential mobile home park to single family residential and a tentative parcel map. To subdivide the parcel into four single family residential lots located in the northwest corner of Sunny Dunes and Sunrise Way. And the recommendation is to continue this to date uncertain. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Can you call the roll, please?
The second was who?
Commissioner?
Roberts.
Roberts? Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts? Commissioner Lan?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
And Chair Womack?
Yes.
Motion is approved six zero.
Thank you. We are now going to new business. Item four A, the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition for a final development plan for Vista Sunrise Two related to a planned development district. For the construction of 61 unit special needs housing located at 1695 North Sunrise Way. Can we have a staff report and then we will have the applicant's team speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you see the screen in full view?
Yes.
All right. So the, um, the planning commission, to give a brief project history, the planning commission reviewed it on November 18th of 2020. And you approved the preliminary PD, uh, which included a general plan change, a sequel MND, a major architectural for the entire DP, DP, DAP campus expansion. And the 61 unit Vista Sunrise Two, uh, complex. The project then moved forward to the city council on December 10th of 2020. And there they approved the preliminary PD in lieu of change of zone, a development agreement, a sequel MND, the general plan change, and then the major architectural. So for the commissioners that may not have been on the planning commission at the time, this is a brief overview of the site, which includes, uh, the 13 acre DAP campus. Which includes Vista Sunrise One, which is in the, um, north, I'm sorry, in the upper corner. The DAP Desert AIDS Project, uh, existing building, the annex building, and then the proposed 18,000 square foot new pavilion that would connect the two buildings. Uh, the Vista Sunrise Two, which is what we will be discussing today. Uh, the reconfiguration and improvements of the retention pond and, uh, dog park. And then the DAP Sunrise Business Center, which is where the admin offices are, uh, for the desert AIDS project. So the planning commission today will look at the final development plan and you need to make several findings. That the final development plan is substantially in conformance with the preliminary plan. That the plan is in conformance with all the other associated entitlements, meaning the major architectural. Um, and then that the final development plan incorporates all the modifications and conditions. That the planning commission city council placed on the preliminary plan. And that's what we're going to focus on today is the conditions that the planning commission and the city council placed. On the project when it will receive preliminary approval. And I'll, if you want to follow along, I'm going to reference, starting on page four of the staff report. Uh, and we'll go through some of these conditions. So planning commission condition number six was that the project followed the transportation demand requirements. Um, staff has evaluated, uh, the, their, their transportation demand, uh, modeling and we feel that we can, uh, we can make that finding that they have. Some satisfied that condition. Uh, and they're doing this through, uh, a series of, of bullet points which are listed on page five. Which include that the type of housing proposed is for special needs and those residents not, don't, do not always need a vehicle. Uh, and they can walk or do ride share opportunities. Uh, the location of the site is across the street from a shopping center. So the residents can walk. Um, DAP Health Network provides referrals for bus passes, uh, and other means of, of vehicle transportation. So staff feels that the, they have met that condition. Planning eleven condition, um, involves adding shade trees along North Sunrise Way. Um, and we'll go over some of the design, designs that they have provided to us. And let me zoom in here. Oops, go back. The area in question is along Sunrise Way, and I'd like to point out that in this diagram, this drawing, it shows the sidewalk, which is existing. Uh, and then there's a series of retaining walls, uh, and the building sits taller, higher than the street. And then there are five palaverde trees that are planted along the frontage of the, uh, the street. So, um, in theory, these are the trees that are providing shade to the street. Uh, the types of trees that they're, that they're proposing are these large shade trees here, which include, uh, palaverdes, uh, tipu trees and so forth. So those are the shade trees that they're proposing, um, for the street. Back in preliminary review, they provided us with several, uh, 3D images of what the street view would look, look like. And once again, this is showing the walls that are on the street and then the trees are sort of, uh, cladded in here. And this was done so you could see both the trees and the architecture of the building. Once again, this is what the street frontage will look like with the street trees, uh, which are set a little bit higher in a planter bed that's set off of the street. Uh, and once again, this is another view of what it will look like with the street trees. Uh, moving on, uh, this was a condition plan number 13 and city council number two condition. Uh, this had to do with, uh, a, a mid-block pedestrian crossing across Sunrise Way. Uh, there was concern by the planning commission and city council that applicants be able to, um, cross the street. Uh, and not jaywalk across Sunrise to get to the shopping center. Um, and what they're providing is, um, a mid-block crossing is required. Uh, and that the applicant will conduct a study with a traffic consultant with a final design to be approved by the city engineer at the time. Other certificate of occupancy for Vista Sunrise Two, uh, and construction to be completed as part of phase two of the DAP pavilion. So to talk about this a little bit more. Um, the applicant has provided several exhibits showing how a mid-block crossing could work. Uh, in this exhibit, and the applicant will discuss this farther, um, but engineering staff here at the city has reviewed this exhibit. Uh, and, and I'll let the engineering talk to this in just a minute. Where they're proposing to locate the mid-block crossing is a logical point when you walk out of, of the shopping center that you would cross at this point. And what this could look like is a push button with, uh, flashlights that is currently, uh, available on Pump Canyon Drive. We've installed, um, several of these along the street. Or it could possibly look like this. This is a, um, a barrier that is in the median. Um, and remember, this has not been worked out yet. This is, the applicant, uh, would like to get final approval. They are ready to submit for building permits, uh, and they want to come back and discuss, uh, these types of crossings. Uh, within now and within the next 18 months while the building is under construction. So that we can find the correct location for this crossing. It may not specifically be here. Our engineering department has a concern that this is too close to Vista Chino. Uh, speeds are quite high. Uh, maybe it's more appropriate to have it back at the edge of Vista Sunrise where the new building will be constructed. So those are the types of issues that need to be studied yet, uh, and we don't have a complete answer for that. And, uh, hoping that the planning commission can move the project forward with the, um, with the study to be conducted and approved by the engineering department. Once again, this is, uh, one of their exhibits of how a crossing could work. So moving on to planning condition number 15, explore the use of additional turf in the retention and dog park. Um, the applicant has provided additional turf in the dog park area. Uh, it's been added underneath the trees within the basin. Uh, there's decomposed granite to be used along with other hardscape amenities. Um, and looking at the proposed grass area, which is the dotted polka dot areas. With decomposed granite, um, there's stairs that come down into the park. There's a ramp. Um, and then to compare this to the preliminary review, uh, it's somewhat similar. They have added brass under these trees and some other turf areas. Uh, but it is very similar and staff feels that it is, uh, consistent with the preliminary. Um, in your, in your review of the preliminary plan, it included hardscape such as benches, uh, the types of. Pavers that will be used, the types of boulders and rocks. Um, so this is just a reference to what the type of hardscape they'll be using. Also sight lighting, they've been, we've reviewed the sight lighting, the poles, the tree up lights, the ballard lights that will be used throughout the, the development. The city council added a condition that a robust bicycle program be included and they are adding bicycle racks. Uh, in the Vista, the Vista Sunrise Campus. Uh, and then moving on to the building architecture, uh, whether they're proposing at final is consistent with what was looked at in preliminary. Uh, you'll notice it's a three-story building. Uh, there are colorful, colorful elements to the exterior of the building. Uh, on all sides, um, the applicant has provided a material board, which includes, uh, the mosaic tile walls. Uh, the different color combinations that they'll be using throughout the, uh, complex itself. One addition that the planning commission, uh, did not see are the addition of carports, uh, and they're proposing. To add four carports. Uh, once again, this is sunrise so that when the residents park, um, they'll be, uh, under shade. And these will also be, uh, I think, uh, solar carports. And the design of the carport is a simple. Design with the height of, uh, seven, eight, 24 span with a maximum height of 10, eight. Uh, so there's clearance, uh, for vehicles in the carports. A grading plan, uh, and then several photographs. So, um, I would like to reference a letter that the planning commission received from, uh, the applicant. Uh, it was emailed to you all, um, yesterday. Uh, and this letter references, uh, discussion items that the AAC had. Um, and once again, I'll reference the staff report on page two of the staff report. There are several things that the AAC wanted to make sure the planning commission looked at at final PD review. And that includes the color samples, which I just, we just looked at the, the material board. And that, uh, the copper roof on the annex building will be restudied. Um, at, currently we're not reviewing the annex building, so that condition is not, uh, particularly relevant to the Vista Sunrise Two, uh, review today. So once again, the findings the planning commission needs to make is that it's substantially in conformance with the preliminary. Staff believes that it is, uh, and that it's conforms to all associate entitlements for the development. Uh, we feel that it also is, and that incorporates the modifications and conditions that the planning commission city council, um, added. Uh, and staff believes that we can make those, uh, make that statement that they have satisfied the conditions that you had placed on it at preliminary. So Madam Chair, that concludes my report and, uh, the resolution does address the required traffic study for the mid-block crossing. Uh, that is included in the resume. And that concludes my report.
We'll open this to questions, but first a question for you. We received a letter from the applicant. Referring to the fact that one of the buildings is 31 feet and not 30 feet. Is there any problem with that and can the record just be amended to include the, uh, actual height?
Right. There's a, a request, um, when they, as you know, when we move from preliminary to final, the construction documents are, are produced. Uh, and floor plates can change and they have added one foot to the height of the building. So it would be 31 feet. Uh, and as you know, this is a planned development district and the planning commission can alter development standards to include that.
So would we have to make a motion to include the altered development standard 31 feet in our motion?
You, you can do that. That could, so it's on the record.
Okay. So we will, whatever motion we make, let's remember that we need to include that. Are there any questions of staff or should we go to the applicant's team and then have questions of them? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Just one question. In terms of the mid-block crossing timing, uh, is it unfeasible, infeasible? Was it unfeasible to, uh, ask them to, uh, complete construction of this as the units are occupied?
So, um, the, the new median that will be added to Sunrise. Would not allow a left turn into the complex. Currently, that's the only way to get in. When you're coming up Sunrise, you make a left-hand turn. The new median will eliminate that so that there's only a right in, right out. So that is, will not be constructed until the DAP campus expansion occurs. So, um. There's a timing issue as to when does the middle block crossing be added? When, if you add it at the end of construction of Vista Sunrise, it will just be removed again when they add the median in the middle. When the pavilion is finished.
So as part of phase two, a median is going to be constructed on Sunrise?
Yes.
I mean, my concern is, you know, plans change and what if this, uh, second phase is delayed or, or some other change that's made. You have all these people living there and they're going to be jaywalking over to that shopping center in the interim. And, uh, is there any way to do, um, incorporate what, uh, a pedestrian crossing and eventually what the final build out will be?
So we are requesting that a study be done. I, I can't say that. I don't know if our engineering department wants to weigh in. Britman, Horace may want to weigh in at this time.
Could we, could we, as a planning commission, recommend that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple. Are there any other questions? I have a few. One, does the robust bicycle plan really work if the bicycle, um. Stations are in Sunriseville one as opposed to two? And is there space for them to be at two?
They are adding, um, uh, bicycle racks at, on Vista Sunrise Two. That's, uh, what the implication is. Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, what was the, what was the percentage of turf in the dog park before and what is it now?
I'd have to leave that up to the applicant to answer that.
Okay. That, hopefully the applicant can give us that information. And then on the street trees, our requirement was really street trees to create shade as people walked. Those trees look like they shade the building, but they don't shade the walkway. And, um, I think your staff report said they were palaverde trees. And if we were shading the walkway, we would be shading with trees approximately, because they have a 30-foot canopy at full growth. We would be placing them 30 feet apart.
These trees are a little bit closer than that.
But they don't shade the walkway, do they?
Right. So there's, um, the edge of the sidewalk, though, there's a, uh, a wall, a low wall, and it steps back because the building sits taller. So in the current configuration, the trees sit above the street.
But do they shade the sidewalk?
Um, when we look at, um, if, if we look at the landscape plan with the symbol showing, um, mid-growth. Um, they would provide some shade. They would not completely shade the sidewalk.
And how long to mid-growth for a 24-box tree?
Five years.
And how long for a 36-box tree?
Three years.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? If Commissioner Hirschbein, you still have a raised hand.
I don't know how that thing gets there.
Okay, the applicant, if you're here, we'll give you each three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Mary Nibara. I am the multifamily director with Pacheco Valley Housing Corporation. CVHC is a nonprofit affordable housing developer with close to 40 years experience developing affordable housing. There is multifamily, single family department. CVHC has constructed constructed close to 5,000 units of housing throughout Riverside County, some of some of these units of which have been constructed in Palm Springs. With me here tonight is Kenneth Rogers, who is CVHC's project manager, our partner, DAP, DAP Health, Carl Baker, and our development team. I just want to give you, I just want to take a moment before turning the mic over to our development team, who could probably answer more of the questions for you in regards to shade trees and so forth. CVHC at this time has secured 100% of the financing for the development of this project. And we're very excited to be at this point of the development process and so close to beginning construction on this much needed affordable housing project. That would include some of some units for homeless individuals. Our next steps, excuse me, our next steps are to begin closing with our investor and our lenders for the project to pull a grading permit, issue the notice of proceed to the general contractor and begin construction. CVHC, as part of some of the financing sources, is we're required to begin construction by the end of January 2022 or sooner if possible. So we're well, we're well on our way to getting there. We're here to ask for your approval on the final development plan and to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Carl Baker. I'm Director of Legal and Legislative Affairs at Desert Days Project. I'm also liaison with the Rogers Ranch neighborhood organization. And we've been working with our neighborhood organization throughout this entire process. They are very enthusiastic that we complete this development. They're also very enthusiastic to have that pedestrian crossing put in because unfortunately, we suffered a loss of life last month for someone jaywalking across the street going towards State of Brothers. So we asked for your approval and we're ready to get going on this project as quickly as possible. To answer your question regarding the possible delays for what we call the pavilion, which would be stage two, those plans are already in process. The fundraising for that is substantially on its way. We have some major donors behind that, so there should not be any foreseeable delays on stage two and the development of that crosswalk. Thank you.
I think I'm up next. I'm Rule Young. I'm part of the architectural term and team, Interact Design Corporation. And we'd like to reiterate what Mary Ann said about we're days away from submitting the final construction documents. The design team will address the four issues that were raised before. The park is not a strict dog park. It was decided that the inclusive inclusivity of staff, residents, clients, and the public was more important. So the path, the the park has not been designed as a dog park and Jeremy Franzini, the landscape architect, will describe that further. The second issue is the mobility. We have three locations for bike racks in the apartments. They're in the passageway, so they're fully covered and protected. And we have dedicated three electric vehicle charging stations, two for cars and one for van. The issue of pedestrian safety, as Carl pointed out, is very high. But there's not going to be any perfect solution. So it has to be developed collaboratively with the traffic engineer, the civil engineer, city engineering and public works and landscape architects. So we will be working on that over the next year. Thirdly, the issue of energy. We will meet the net zero energy standards for the California Energy Code. But it's there's this ratio between demand and square footage of PV panels. So we had to increase the number of carports that would have PV panels. And the carports have to be wider, not the standard 17 feet, but more like 20 feet, which in the southern property line means that the overhang of the roof will be within a foot and a half of the property line. However, it is more than 150 feet from the boundary of the planned development district. So we're adding carports and we're expanding the size. The last item is, as has been pointed out, that the development of the building to meet the code requirements require and shading of the lights and the patterns that we had already designed required that we added a foot to the height of the building. And we have submitted a material board. We're delighted to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
And I'm Jeremy Franzini with Michael Baker International, the landscape architect for the project. And so I can help answer any questions relating to landscape design, specifically to the amount of grass area in the dog park. You know, we think we've increased that probably 25 to 30% from what we had before, but it is still a mix of decomposed granite and grass. So we've got a we're trying to achieve a balance there between that. So I'll be glad to answer any more questions relating to the landscape design.
Thank you.
I guess I'm up next. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rich Vaughn. I'm with Michael Baker International. I represent the civil engineering side of our design team. I think the one thing I'd like to highlight is that the existing drainage basin that's on the site right now is being completely reconfigured, deepened. And the purpose for that is to take in a the 100 year rain event that would happen. Currently on the site right now, only a portion of that rainwater is staying on site. A good majority of it is is leaving the site. So this this basin is designed to accept the 100 year storm from the existing parking lot in DAP as well as the apartment site. The only storm water that would enter out onto sunrise is the east facing roofs. So we're greatly increasing the amount of storm water that would be captured, held on site and percolated into into the ground. And I'm available for any other questions that you that you guys may have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from your team that wishes to speak?
No, that's that's the team. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions for the team from the commission? Seeing none, am I right? I have some. They're basically directed at Mr. Franzini. The aim of the street trees was to shade the sidewalk so that people can walk down that sidewalk. I'm assuming we're looking at only the trees that are in front of the apartment building. Am I correct? Is that the only area?
That is correct.
And and is there an area that those trees could be placed where they would be more on the street?
Yeah, you know, looking at it, you know, the original intent, we were trying to balance, you know, the space that we have between the street and the building. The buildings are set back significantly. And the trees were kind of occupying that space, but you know, with the intent of trying to shade the sidewalk, I do think there's some opportunity to to shift the trees towards the sidewalk. It's gonna not necessarily balance the space as well, because now they're going to be a pretty good distance from the building. And we do have that small wall that's, you know, kind of putting the building up on a little bit of a pedestal that's you know, we kind of need to be a little bit away from that. So we could perhaps move them closer. I'm not sure it's going to be the exact, you know, final outcome of people walking underneath a canopy of trees. You know, you'd really need to put the tree in the right of way to accomplish something like that. In this case, the sidewalk is taking up the entire right of way space that we have here. And then the wall kind of becomes a little bit of an obstacle to deal with. So you know, there might be some opportunity to to move them a little bit closer. But to, you know, it's it's not going to be a traditional you know, street tree canopy that people would be walking under it along the length of this frontage.
And then you can is there any problem with making those 36 a 36 inch box?
There's no problem. I, you know, it's this is the this is one of the debates about material if people want to get into it, you know, usually the 24 inch box will catch up to a 34 or 36 inch box by the time they get to that half size maturity. It's a little bit additional cost to the developer, you know, it probably doubles the cost of the tree to go from 24 inch to 36 inch box. You know, so there's some additional cost with it. I think, you know, physically, will they fit in the space? Yeah, you know, there's plenty of room to to plant a larger sized tree.
And then the percentage of grass in the area, I know it's a shared area, but I have seen, I can't imagine anybody who's going to use the DG portion of the area. People use grass. You have very little on the project. And certainly dogs don't use DG. It isn't, I mean, the city has a dog park that they're redoing because they did it with DG because no one would take their animals in there. And I've seen that in another city in Santa Monica where nobody would use a dog park that had DG as opposed to grass. So I'm just going to leave it at that. That's something before the commission. I don't think the percentage increase you gave us was anything like what we asked you for.
Yeah, and just to be clear again, it's it's now being repurposed as a general park and not necessarily only for dogs. It's more of an all inclusive approach now. And, you know, the purpose of the DG is that it's a walkable surface that, you know, meets some accessibility requirements. Whereas if it was all grass, we'd still need some sort of walkways in and about the area.
You do have walkways.
Well, the decomposed granite, once you enter into the lower portion of the basin will be
What percentage of grass right now?
I'm sorry, I will repeat that.
What is the percentage of grass right now?
I would say grass to DG, it's fairly equal. Right now, you know, I don't have the exact percentages. We didn't. We didn't analyze the percentages, but you can see, hopefully, if we zoom in on the plan, there's two different hatch patterns indicating where the grass is and the DG. We tried to you know, make the DG more of the main walking surface so it wouldn't get worn out at bottoms of stairs or the ramp that's going in there so that those higher use areas, you know, would be a walkable surface that would be accessible.
Thank you. I think those those are my questions. Does anybody else have questions? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Chair. I'm throwing out a more of a general question to whoever on the team wants to to take this question. So I'm sure I share a huge amount of enthusiasm that you are doing this. It meets many needs, not only for DAP, but for the city in general. And one of the very reasons that I came back to the planning commission for the city of Palm Springs was because I want to be part of the city being able to offer more affordable housing, special needs housing, and certainly housing to transfer people from the street, transition people from the street. My question to you is a little bit more general. Are there things that we could do for you on this project that would have made this project either bigger, meaning you could have housed more or a lot more cost effective? So an example of that was could we have waived more parking requirements? Et cetera. I understand we're a little bit far along in this process to answer that question, but it would be very helpful to know. Because now is the chance. If there was other going to be a minor easier or major remodel to offer you more of what you're trying to do, it would be helpful to know about that. There was a question in there, by the way.
It's it's a little bit out of order because we're reviewing conformity. Possibly we can get that question after we've deliberated?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I'm, I know it's last minute, but there's opportunity for change. It isn't built yet. That's all I'm throwing out here.
So Madam Chair, I could take a stab at responding?
Please.
Briefly. The evolution of housing crosses so many, there are so many layers of requirements that not unlike the previous request for a variance where there is an absolute definition, 750 square feet. And that may not work in a circumstance. The same thing is true in terms of the housing. Unfortunately, the regulations that most define what it costs are not under the purview of the city. The provision for fewer parking is one of the biggest that has allowed higher density without going to a building taller than three stories. Going to four or five stories, while it would increase the number of units, I think would be very harsh in the city of Palm Springs, specifically at this location. I really can't come up off the top of my head with requirements that the city imposes that would change substantially the amount of part of housing allowed on this site. You would have to talk to the postal department. You would have to talk to the Energy Commission, to the ADA compliance specialists. All of them put spatial and mechanical and structural demands on housing that add to the cost and limit the number of units. You've already allowed for smaller units than you have in the code and you've allowed for a three story, which was under the PD approval. So I wish I could come up with a simple just do this. I can't. But I think if you give us a little time, we could come back with some suggestions.
Thank you. This is a bigger conversation for later. But again, because we're here and it's now and this project is before us, and again, not built. If you had hit any roadblock, this is the last stop and we could have worked with you. So your answer is sufficient and thank you.
The, thank you. The matter is before the commission. I want to suggest a motion to approve with a few amendments to it. One would be that we allow 31 feet height to conform with what they're actually building. The second would be that we ask them to try and move the trees somewhat closer to the street to the extent that they can. The I I don't recommend we make any recommendations regarding the street crossing. Just hope that it's expedited and ask our engineering department to expedite it to the extent that they can. And the last is the dog park. I do think I understand the need for a harder turf, but on the for a harder surface. So the area where you have grass and hard surface a harder surface. So, the area where you have grass and hard surface, I would leave it as it is. On the other side, I would add 75% of that other area to be grass. And grass is good for people to watch. Greenery is good for people, and you will still have areas that are hard surface that people can walk on.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Would you take a friendly amendment?
Which is?
For finding relative to the crosswalk, that city engineering approval prior to CVO for the first phase be required. Right now, it's at the time of, and that's pretty nebulous, and I want to make sure that they actually have an approved crossing.
Can we get an approval, Glenn, when they're at 50% completion?
I don't know why not. We could tie it to that if you choose to do so.
Is that agreeable to you, Laurie?
Yes, that is, if we have a definition for, I don't know what 50% completion looks like. But that's even better than...
50% completion, and Mary Ann, you might want to help me with this. Is that 50% of your expenditure of money?
It would be both, 50% of expenditure of money, but also 50% of the project being completed.
What I need to know on that, is that doable? I throw that out to your entire team. Is that possible?
If I could speak, because there are so many overlapping people who will have something to say, assembling them, going through, will this work? Will that work? No, try this. It causes anxiety because we have to pull in three layers of, four layers of consultants, two layers of city staff. So, we understand the principle, but people, by the time people are there, can they cross safely? That, I think, is what you're asking for.
That's really what we're asking, is as you get to CVO or rent up, can people cross safely?
And part of the issue is, as was described by Glenn, is that the access into the campus, currently, if you're northbound on Sunrise, only goes between the DAP building and the annex building, not the main southerly drive. When the pavilion is started, that access will not be available, and the left end for northbound will be at the main drive. So, the timing of the construction of that median is also a back-and-forth. I can't commit that we could complete it at the time that the apartments are completed because it's related to the full traffic flow along Sunrise.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that they're clear on what we want? I don't want us to throw any roadblocks in their way. Staff gets it. I think they get it. I don't think there's any disagreement. Can we let the record reflect that that's a desire, but let's not hold them back for it?
Before we do that, Rick, do you have a comment on this? It's putting your department.
Yeah, I would, I tend to agree with Rule on this because, once you get into the design, let's just say, for instance, that the traffic study comes back and it's in favor of a crosswalk. And once you start getting into the design, the design can take on, you know, different aspects. It can, you know, it can move, and then ordering, just ordering parts for traffic signals, it's a long lead item, just ordering parts. I mean, if we're talking just simplicity here to figure out timing, that can be months of waiting for parts. So, you know, nailing them down to a specific time, I think is...
I was trying to nail you down to a specific time.
We will do everything we can to make sure that we work with our traffic engineer, get it reviewed, and get it to where it needs to be as fast as we can to get, make sure that they hit those marks. But putting a specific time on them to get that done might, that might be a little tough to do.
Laurie, I think we can't do that.
I think Rick had me at ordering parts for traffic signals. I got that, yeah.
Okay, so we do not have the, in there, although staff knows, we want this to move as expeditiously as it can for the safety of people, of our friends who jaywalk. So, we have a motion to, and second, comments?
Yeah, it seemed like one of the options being presented as far as that area was a barricade, and I'd like to take that off the table.
This is in front of the building?
In the middle of the street. That was one of the options, was to put a barricade there so people wouldn't go across the street.
Right, that was discussed at the council meeting. It wasn't discussed at Planning Commission. That was one of the recommendations by a council member. So, I'm sure that that could be, you know, if the traffic study, if that's one of the suggestions, and maybe Rick can comment on this, it may be an option. I don't know.
Well, I'd like to take that option off the table as part of our motion.
Well, one of the things that we talked about with Rule Young and his team just recently was that, you know, engineering is not, you know, we're all about safety. We want nothing but safety out there for people trying to cross Sunrise. But if the traffic study does not support the crosswalk, then the recommendation by council to put in some type of a barrier through the center of a median was to try to detour people from jaywalking. So, we have a couple elements to look at. If the traffic study does not hold up for a crosswalk to be installed, then you still have a barrier to be installed or to be looked at.
Rick, can't we look at, instead of a barrier, a traffic light?
Traffic light, we reviewed, and that's already off the table. That is not something that we recommended.
May I suggest that we not try to tinker with this right now? I think we've got the best minds working on it, and why don't we trust the traffic engineers on this? This is what they do all day. And let them come back with what works based on their surveys and their research?
It just seems to me that putting up a three- or four-foot, two-foot, it's just going to make it more dangerous. People are going to want to flip over that thing. It just seems, it doesn't seem like a solution to me.
It's not a solution yet. It's one idea of many, and I'd like to see what else they come up with and why. That was suggested as a stopgap if nothing else worked. So, I don't want to take any arrows out of their quiver right now. I really want to hear what they come up with. Everybody wants to find a way to cross. I think that that is what happens if there is no way to cross, for whatever reason.
Glenn, can this come back to us if that's, if people are determining that's the only option?
Potentially, it could, but please realize that that may impede the progress of the project.
Okay, I'm going to just hold with my motion with no friendly amendments regarding the traffic study. And JR, are you the same place? Are you?
Yeah, yeah, I think we've taken them as far as we need to take them right now.
Okay. Comments from anybody? We really want this to succeed. We love the project. We love all of you for doing it. I just wanted to throw that out. We're really in favor of it. We just want it to be perfect, too.
And we want it to be a model for future projects. So, how this works affects all of us and a lot of people in the future.
So, can we call the roll? The motion is in the affirmative with a few changes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Wester Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Layman?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hershby?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morozey?
Yes.
Motion is approved 6-0 with one exception.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, this, I know the whole commission has been waiting for this, is a discussion, consideration of submitting priorities, areas of focus for the city council visioning session, and staff report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, we introduced this item to you at your last Planning Commission meeting. Just by way of background, again, very briefly, the city council has scheduled a visioning session in November where they are going to prioritize their projects, understanding that there are limited staff resources and funding resources, and taking those into consideration in terms of the projects that they focus their time and energy on. As part of that process, they are requesting that each board and commission in the city forward their own priorities to the city council for consideration. By aligning the priorities of the boards and commissions with city council, it helps us to be more focused in terms of getting projects done and accomplished. And so, to that end, we are here this evening to discuss the priorities of the Planning Commission. What council is requesting is that you forward your top two priorities to the city council for consideration. What I would like to do is walk you through this exercise. First, I'd like to talk about some ongoing priorities that are underway, and the reason that I'm doing that is, we don't want to look at the ongoing priorities as things to forward to city council, because we're already working on them. They're already authorized. What we want to do is focus you on new priorities that we want to forward to city council. So, with that, let me go to a PowerPoint, and just let me share my screen here in a moment. So, looking at projects that we're already working on, first and foremost is the limited update to the general plan and the housing element update. So, that's already in progress, already underway. Another major project that we are working on is inclusionary housing. I haven't had the opportunity to report to you yet, but the city council received a report on September the 9th and did authorize staff to move ahead with economic studies and a nexus study relative to inclusionary housing. So, the city council has already authorized staff to work on that project, and we do have some funding available for that. In addition, another project that the city council has authorized is an update to our off-street parking requirements. This is going to require a parking study be done as part of the assessment of our current parking standards and determining new parking standards that are more efficient. And then finally, one of the other major projects that we're working on is electronic plans, middle and plan check. This is the citywide software system that will move us into a digital format for taking in applications and will also help us be much more efficient. So, these are things that we're already working on, and so in terms of the sheet that we gave to you in terms of filling out for city council priorities, these would be things that we would include under ongoing priorities. And I wouldn't want to include them in your new priorities because, again, they're already funded and staff time is being set aside to work on these things. So, next comes up the discussion of what should be the top two priorities for Planning Commission that you want to forward to city council. And I was asked at your last Planning Commission meeting to give you a list of potential things that you might include. So, I'm going to go ahead and give you my list, and then I'm going to turn the time over to you all to give me your list of things that you think should also be included or consideration. Once we go through those items, what I'd like to do is, commissioner by commissioner, have you identify your top two to see if we can narrow this down somewhat. So, let me go through my list of items first, and then I'll ask you for your suggestions. So, here's what I've got. Because we're doing a limited update to the general plan, there are still other elements of the general plan that will need to be updated. There's the recreation conservation, open space element, the air quality element, the noise element, and the community design element. There's no real timetable from the state in terms of getting these done. It's not like the housing element that has to be done every certain number of years, but still, these are things that we need to do. Secondly, we really do need to update our zoning code, and especially as we look at changes to the housing element and the land use element, there's going to be aspects of the zoning code that will not align with the general plan. As you've already seen this evening, in terms of some of the standards in the zoning code, they're way out of date, including our standards for service stations. So, that's another major project that we need to undertake, is to rewrite our zoning code and completely update our zoning code. Following that, we need to do an update of our zoning map, and that's particularly looking at areas where there's a conflict between the general plan designation and the zoning. We've got a number of these throughout the city, and we need time and funding to do the environmental studies to do those rezonings. So, that's another major project that needs to be done. Implementation of the housing element. Once we adopt the housing element, we'll need to start working on implementation of that. And I've got an asterisk by that because I've got some additional projects that would fall under that category that I'll talk about. And then another project that's been bubbling up is from the Palm Springs Architectural Association. They're interested in having us develop architectural design guidelines. I think we've talked about this as a planning commission in the past. And so, that's another major project that you all may consider as forwarding to the city council as a priority project. Going back to the asterisk by the housing element implementation and drawing on some of the recommendations from our inclusionary housing report, here are some of the things that we might look at as other major projects. One of those is revising exclusionary housing policies. For example, we don't address single-room occupancy or SRO housing types or tiny homes in our zoning code. We've also talked in the past about single-family zoning as an exclusionary housing policy. Jim Priest will talk about that a little bit later on in our agenda relative to Senate Bill 9, which was just recently signed by the governor. So, there's some things there that we can do. Also, revision of development standards for multifamily housing. What we see is that our 24-foot height limit and our open-space requirements severely limit the amount of density that we need to encourage for multifamily housing and to accommodate affordable housing. Also, we can look at our density bonus section that we've already got in our zoning code and see how we might expand that to make that more attractive for developers. In addition, this is coming directly from our inclusionary housing report, look at developing a commercial linkage program, that there be a fee associated with commercial development to help fund affordable housing, and then also looking at an EIFD, as they call it, or Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. This is similar to tax increment financing that we had under redevelopment in California, which could create a funding mechanism for affordable housing. That will take some significant staff work to accomplish that, and so that might be something for consideration. So, just breaking down implementation of the housing element, here are some of the things that we can do that you might want to either pull apart as a priority or two, or you might want to do a general priority to city council. You could just call it housing element implementation and understand that it includes many of, not all of, those things. Some other projects that I've got on my list, college park specific plan, which deals with... college park specific plan, which deals with the northern area of the city where the College of the Desert was to be located, next to Desert Island Gateway. That needs to be updated with the change to the location of the college site. Section 14 specific plan, while it's not as complex in terms of those proposed changes, there have been some changes that we're proposing or have occurred relative to land use that we need to do. One of the city council members has encouraged us to look at adopting a creative sign code that would allow greater flexibility for creative sign types. That would take some time to do. And then something that we've talked about with you all is looking at our shopping center development standards to encourage more mixed-use development on existing and proposed shopping center sites to encourage more housing and to make those sites more efficient. So those are some other things that you all might consider. So with that, that's my somewhat limited list of things that I might propose to you. So what I'd like to do now is to go commissioner by commissioner and ask for your suggestions of things that you might add to that list before we start to narrow down from that. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to go by square by square. And Commissioner Hirschbein, do you mind if I start with you? Do you have any suggestions of priority projects that we might suggest to city council?
Well, one thing you already brought up, and that was aligning with that SB nine, which, as you pointed out, just passed on by the governor. And I don't know what kind of timeframe cities are going to be required to comply with that or not, but it's certainly something we should be in front of. And I don't know if that's really a priority, that's just like, we need to do that. But in terms of visioning, and I was kind of taking that word in a broader sense, and I was thinking about our city and its development and what's gone on in the past and what we want to see in the future. And I think one of the things for me that's missing from the equation is urban design. I think we've got urban planning down. I don't think we have urban design down. And I think that's going to take an outside consultant with this sort of experience to tell us what we need to do to promote good urban design. And the outcome will be beneficial for the city on so many different ways. Enhanced pedestrian experience, enhanced connectivity, pedestrian connectivity, better commercial districts, better use of our existing districts. And part of this, or a big part of this, is what do we want the space between buildings to look like? What do we want our streets to look like? What do we want our sidewalks to look like? What do we want our streetlights to look at, look like? And this to me is urban design. It's not necessarily urban planning. It's a separate but related endeavor. And it's, it would take, it's a big thing. It's a big vision. It's not like you go out and rewrite a code. It's something that's going to evolve over time. But, you know, you look at our forefathers here in the city, and it's sometime, I believe, in the 1980s, they decided that Palm Canyon needed to be re-looked at, the street downtown. And we've got wider sidewalks, we've got certain paving patterns, we've got certain decorative light fixtures, trash receptacles, turn signals. And I think it's time to look at that again. Like, we need, this is, we're now a world-class destination. And unfortunately, we don't really look like a world-class destination in that sense, and we need to do that. So it's more of a vision. I'm not sure how to put that down as a priority. It's a lot of kind of thoughts wrapped around it, but that's what I'm thinking.
Commissioner Roberts, can I pick on you next?
Yeah. I'll shock you, I'm going to be brief. I like your list. I actually love what Commissioner Hirschbein just said. I think that that could be done alongside anything else we did because that could be made up of subcommittees and community meetings and so forth to talk about who we are today and what we look like. So I think that could happen alongside any list because it doesn't necessarily cost a ton of money or staff time. So that is something I would definitely want to see as well. But with respect to your list, which included the two things I care about the most or I see as a priority for the city council and our immediate future would be the housing element. And in second place would be update the zoning code, which I think goes hand in hand with the housing element. And I know from too much experience with the city council and the planning commission a few times, how how out of, just out of order our zoning code is. And we ran into it tonight. Nobody knew why we had this crazy zoning that we bumped up against. And it could have been for some arbitrary reason 50 years ago, and here we are adhering to it when in my opinion it made no sense. So I think updating the zoning code is vital at this point. It's, it's, it could be causing us to be making big mistakes. So housing element, zoning code for me.
Okay. Commissioner Maruzzi, and again, if I could just have you focus on anything that's missing from this list, and then I'll come back and we'll talk about priorities. So Commissioner Maruzzi, is there anything?
This is extremely extensive, and it's frightening we have to only pick two.
I know, I know, it's hard. It's kind of like Sophie's Voice. Commissioner Song?
Wow, you've done a lot of work. That's a lot of list items that are very important to our city. And so I'm going to mention a few of them, but I think they're just subcategories. So one of them being a green shade program that's part of zoning. And what I mean by that is it could branch out into several research as far as how successful are parking finger landscape islands when we are saying that that's what's allowable to shade parking lots? How can we be more creative about, I've seen these wonderful designs where they literally have a four-yard trash bin in downtowns to bring this, you know, huge leaf shade trees so that we can encourage bringing shade because that's where people come. Percentage of shade that a city can provide because that tells you how successful and healthy and encourage livability. And so I don't know if that technically comes in under parking standards or I don't know if we have a crisscross sort of effort with sustainability commission. But I think having looked at shade and how it's practically successful would be important. The discretionary review of SB nine, there's another one that's SB 10, which is about development near transit. And in my experience, in the Coachella Valley, a bust-up is transit. So the opportunities that that would bring for development could also be wrapped up with what you're doing with SB nine. The third thing is that, I think my nature is to be practical, so there's been a lot of amazing ideas on how do we bring more healthy retail business into some of the neighborhoods in Palm Springs. And from my understanding is that we need to have a pro forma that has so many housing projects in which you could support the business of bringing, for example, a grocery in. So I know we have our general plan and I know we have our zoning, but maybe there's a, again, as a joint effort with Economic Development Agency where we can say, before we can bring the grocery, can we bring more, you know, single-family or more density housing? So we can have a a demand in which the businesses were actually would want to and not have to be subsidized to open in certain locations. And that is more an effort that we've been talking about, and so what I'm asking is how could we make that reality with, you know, our zoning and general plan? Or maybe it's completely out of it and it's completely on Economic Development Agency to take care of that. The the last item is has to do with how, let me see. So when it comes to when it comes to the zoning updates, when we're looking at some of the items that are archaic, especially right now with sustainability and off-gassing, if we can look at not only for service station, but can we look at other areas of what are we asking for minimum square foot requirements? And I think a lot has been said tonight, so I would not elaborate, but I think that falls under updating the zoning code, updating the zoning map, and then housing element implementation underneath that. So I hope I was useful, but those were my comments.
So Commissioner Song, on your last point, looking at eliminating minimum square footage requirements?
Eliminating would be, I think, quite difficult, but that would be, that would be, it obviously needs to be supported, but could that be the goal?
Okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure I phrase this right. Okay. Let's see, who have I missed? Commissioner Alain? Any additions to the list before we get into discussion of what is your number one and number two choices?
In following your directions, I am going to answer this simply, no additions. I know my two are on when we get the next round of questions. And a PS to Commissioner Song, if if the whole idea about the feasibility and getting into neighborhoods with needed community development like grocery stores in the north end, if that doesn't make it on this list, you and I and maybe Commissioner Irvin will meet with Economic Development and see if we can put it on their list.
Okay. Terrific. Commissioner Irvin, do you have any additions?
Nope. Great segue. She just mentioned what I was going to say. Took it over.
Sounds good. Okay, Chair Wermuth, if you could wrap us up, any additions to the list?
A couple. I love the economic development nexus because if we, we can't get to all things through zoning. We have to do it in a more holistic way. I really agree with the urban design and the green trees. On the list, if, and this is a question for you, we're talking about projects, but I've always wanted you to have a long-range planner. A lot of this could be done by having an adequate person who can only work on long-range issues on your staff. And to me, that's been a top priority for years. I mean, I think you need a sufficient consulting budget and you need a long-range planner. And then I think you can work through the various things that you need to do.
Madam Chair, I will tell you, I do have a separate line on the city council sheet for that, so it won't need to be one of your priorities, and I'll get to that further on in our discussion.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, so with that, let me see if I can just put up on your screen here the items that the commissioners just discussed. There we are. So in addition to the list that I shared with you, we had Commissioner Hirschbein's suggestion about accommodating the elimination of single-family zoning that's proposed under SB nine. The timeframe for that, just because you brought that up, Commissioner, is actually January for an implementation date. So that's the timeframe for that. Also, it was suggested that we needed to have a visioning or develop an urban design study for the city to bring in an outside consultant to do that for us, and JR and Chair Wermuth also supported that. Commissioner Song brought up the idea of developing a green shade program, which was also submitted, also supported by Chair Wermuth. Commissioner Song also brought up SB 10, the development of housing adjacent to transit. Number five, in terms of the additions, is doing a study to bring retail businesses into neighborhoods. And then number six was to look at the zoning code and eliminate minimum square footage requirements in terms of thinking of things that were contrary to to off-gassing and other environmental regulations. So those were the things that were suggested in addition to the things that I already have proposed to you. So with that, I'm going to go commissioner by commissioner and make you pick your top two things. So I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Hirschbein. What would be your top two that you would want to see on the list? You're muted, Commissioner.
Can you put that list back up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, well, number one would be number two for me. And then I think updating the housing element with all those subcategories that you included would be number two. I mean, we could pick one of yours, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so it would be the housing element with all those subcategories you identified.
And then the SB nine one?
No, I mean, you only get two, right? So the number two, visioning. Well, SB nine would come under the housing element, I think.
It really would. Yeah, it's something we're going to work on anyway.
I don't know if this is relevant at this point, but I sent you an email kind of getting into detail about that urban design business, and I was wondering if the other commissioners would want to see that.
Potentially.
Yes.
So should I send it now or?
Go ahead and resend it to me and I'll forward it to the other commissioners.
Okay.
Also, Madam Chair and Commissioners, one thing that we also have currently is the community design element. So that does speak to urban design and could be part of the kind of future update to the general plan as a priority.
Okay. Commissioner Roberts, you already gave me two items, your one and two, housing element and the update to the zoning code. Do you want to make any modifications?
No, I don't think so. I think most things are covered in it. But you put in so many subcategories that I think were covered with respect to the urban design thing, which is so sexy. I think that can happen, I don't think that should be in this list. I think it should be something that the planning commission can initiate along with some help from staff, but that doesn't have to wait. That, that, that's something that we can do as a special project.
Okay. Got it. Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yeah, the update of the zoning code and then the housing element, the long list. Unfortunately, I would have wanted to have the development of the architectural design guidelines in there because that's a big issue for me as relates to the remainder of downtown and making sure we have architecture that we like before they hire a firm and present us a feuille à complet, but I guess only have two.
Sorry. Okay. Commissioner Song?
The housing element implementation and the green program, green shade program.
Okay. Commissioner Alain?
Yes. Like several others, I think my two are updated the zoning ordinance and the implementation of the housing element. In particular for that, because I know there's too many things for us to be able to do all of them. But two of your bullet points and two that I think need to be done are revising the development standards and increasing the density bonus. I think those two are the quickest way to produce results. I think EIFD, it's great, but it probably will not work in Palm Springs and it would take forever to get through and produce results. So I'd encourage us to focus Uh, so I'd encourage us to focus that down a little bit. Um, and secondly, on the update of the zoning ordinance, it ain't pretty, it ain't fun, it ain't sexy, it's none of those things, but it's necessary. We have conflicts and where we have conflicts and contradictions between the general plan and the zoning ordinance, we lose, uh, just about a hundred percent of the time. Anybody challenges us, we lose. And run over heads to the state, we lose. It wasn't done the last time they updated the general plan, it really, really needs to be done. That's my speech.
Okay. Commissioner Irvin, what are your top two?
Uh, I have the implement of the housing, uh, element and also updating the zoning codes.
Okay.
And could I change mine? Commissioner Alain made a really good point.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, I'll just keep on lecturing about shade.
Get that into the zoning code.
Okay. So Commissioner Song, I'm changing your green shade to zoning code update?
That's correct, thank you.
Okay. And last but not least, Chair Wermuth?
I've got the same two priorities, uh, implementing the housing element and the zoning code with a third. I've got a third and a fourth, but I'll just throw them out 'cause I want their sub, but I do think we need to update the general plan. We've got things like the noise ordinance that should have been updated two years ago where, um, we've got all sorts of conflicts going on, on issues like that. Um, and the other one, if I had one, it would be economic development, it would be economic development for the north side of town and really focusing on taking care of the north side of town. It really, it bothers me that the sidewalks look bad, that the roads aren't good, that there's trash on the streets, uh, that it's windblown, that there're vacant lots, the, and that nobody has really, the city has ignored it for twenty or thirty years. And I, you know, I don't know if we incorporate, you know, I just wanna say that is really, really a strong thing for me. It's probably my strongest emotional concern with this city, uh, much more than a sexy downtown or urban design. Um, and I just, I maybe forget the general plan, but put that as my strong third, that it's, uh, I'm embarrassed with what we haven't done.
I wanna believe that that rolls into subcategories for the housing element.
It does, but it's not the only thing on the housing element. The sewers, there are, sewers aren't hooked up in part of, part of the north side of town. Uh, I just, you know, I took a walk, I almost bought a house there eleven years ago and recently took a walk with Grace Garner. And I, it just really upset me that what we weren't doing and, and it's been, it looked exactly the way it did eleven years ago.
Okay. So based on each of your comments, it looks like the two winning items are going to be the update or, sorry, implementation of the housing element and the update to the zoning code. Those are the ones that are mentioned most frequently, uh, among the seven of you. So those are the ones that we'll forward to the city council. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to get to the other projects. These are just your top two priorities for consideration by city council. And as Commissioner Roberts and others have suggested, there's no reason why there aren't other projects that we can work on. So, uh, keep in mind that you will have demands on us as staff to do things and we'll accommodate those as best we can, uh, as we look at areas that we need to improve in terms of our zoning and land use. The next couple of questions that I have on the sheet that we are forwarding to city council, um, let me just go back to the PowerPoint. Let's see. Um, there's a question, they want to know activities that could be deferred, referred or eliminated. Any comments there? There's no reason to put anything here and I can't really think of anything that you all do that needs to be deferred.
We just did that. We simplified, this year, we, we simplified some of what we take up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Aligning the process, so I think we've, I think we've done it.
Okay. Moving on to the next question, are there critical organizational changes needed? And Chair Wermuth, you suggested that we need a long range planner.
Yes.
Any other suggestions in terms of organizational changes?
I have one.
Yes.
I don't know how I feel about this, but I think one thing that could be considered to streamline our process is a potential combination of the planning commission and the architectural review board. Combining them e- either into one or two boards that meet simultaneously.
Okay.
And I know that's a radical thought, but I think it's something we should consider.
Okay. I, I'd like to consider internally before we make the recommendation to council, though.
Sure, of course. I would start here, my mind.
Okay. Any other suggestions about organizational changes? Whoops.
I just think you need a sufficient consulting budget for the things that get put on you where you need consultants. I think you need a budget that allows you to hire people and not just project by project.
So I, what I hear in that is bandwidth of the planning department. So it doesn't matter how much we ask for or the council asks for. You can have good intentions all day long, but do you have the tools that you need? Do you have the bandwidth to do the work? Otherwise, we're just dreamers.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I just kinda dovetails in with that. I don't know if it's considered organizational, but in my opinion, when you guys are tasked with, um, putting together five public hearings for a single meeting and we're tasked with hearing those five, I think that you can't do the quality of work that you need to do and your entire staff can't do, uh, focus on each and do the quality production of the resolutions and then the thought processes that need to go in. And frankly, our meetings go long enough that probably we lose capacity for good decision making. And if there were a way to put a, um, speed governor on things so that you say no more than three or four public hearings in one meeting, and if you were able to, um, then process according to this, uh, imposition of, of, uh, structure, I think we all might benefit from that some. We'll put the idea, we'll get shot down, this developer's will scream, so.
So I have one, um, so, um, okay, um. How about considering why on the PDD application, we need a final PDD review and approval?
Okay.
Meaning that could be done at a staff level?
Yes.
Yeah. Right, I think you're right.
Okay. Any other suggestions to organizational changes or process improvements? Okay. If not, you've given me everything that I need, I'll go ahead and draft that up and forward that to the city council for consideration at their, uh, priority session that they have scheduled for November nineteenth and twentieth.
Could you send it to us as well before you send it to the council?
Yeah.
Sure, it's what we intended.
Okay. Absolutely.
Flynn, what organizational changes do you think we need?
Um, I certainly support the long range planner. Um, in terms of process improvements, I think JR's suggestion of combining planning commission and architecture review committee is an interesting idea. If that's something that can save time, that kind of goes up against what Lori was, oh, sorry, Commissioner Alain was suggesting, uh, relative to trying to shorten meetings. I don't know that it would necessarily do that. Um, I like process improvements that Commissioner Song has suggested in terms of looking at the PDD process, uh, making that a little bit more efficient. Uh, I, I think they're all good suggestions, but, uh, in terms of one that would be most helpful, having a long range planner would probably be number one on my list. What, what kind of duties would that person have? The primary duties of that individual would be the update of the general plan and implementation of the general plan. And so they would primarily be tasked with, um, going about achieving the goals and policies of the general plan where there's a need to amend the zoning code or, uh, enact this or do that. And so that's what a large portion of their responsibility would be. As opposed to processing stuff that comes in? Exactly. But they're focusing primarily on that. Long range planners typically would also do the type of things like the urban visioning that you talk about. Uh, they would be more responsible for those types of projects rather than the processing of applications.
Director, I will suggest one other thing that is probably hearsay, but anyway, um, many communities have no more than five commissioners on either the planning commission or architectural review. Uh, that does serve to provide staff with fewer, uh, people to try to pacify and it does, it, it streamlines meetings, uh, production of minutes, anything that goes along with that. Um, you know, probably you could give, with, uh, five well-selected commissioners, you could probably get as well-rounded input from the community as you can with seven or nine or forty. And I understand I'm, I'm speaking this to, and cover your ears, Commissioner Roberts, to a city who at one point, I think, had either forty or fifty people on a transparency committee. So.
Yep, that, by the way, that was insane. There's no way around it.
Yeah.
Okay. I will tell you this, I have to get this turned into the city manager's office by the end of the day tomorrow, so I'll try and draft this up in between meetings tomorrow morning, send it to you. I will need your comments back relatively quickly.
Thanks, Flynn.
With that, that concludes that agenda item. And Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. We have, uh, we've asked Jim Priest to give us a summation on SB nine and SB ten that have just been passed and they're important bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening. Um, yeah, as, um, the chair had mentioned earlier, SB nine and SB ten, SB nine and SB ten just passed and were signed by the governor last week, so these are right at the forefront of emerging, uh, zoning and housing law right now. Uh, SB nine is a very interesting law that effectively will allow single-family residential lots to be split into two lots as a matter of right, as a ministerial approval, not a discretionary approval. This would be ministerial. In addition, once those two lots are subdivided, each lot could have up to two units. So there is the potential under SB nine for a, one single-family zoned lot to be subdivided in such a way and then developed so you could have four housing units on the property. Um, there are certain criteria that have to be met for somebody to be able to qualify for one of these special, what they call urban lot splits. Uh, it has to be single-family residential, you cannot remove or, uh, alter affordable housing or certain other forms of, uh, uh, tenant occupied housing. Uh, it cannot, um, uh, eliminate or affect the historic landmark or if it's within a historic district, that would prohibit one of these urban lot splits. Um, the property has to be within an urbanized area of the city, uh, for practical purposes. That would mean most parts of the city, uh, most would be defined as urban. Um, anyway, so those are some of the dynamics of SB nine that would allow some single-family residential lots to be built much denser than currently and do so as a ministerial approval. Again, this would not be discretionary. Both the lot split and the above-ground construction of the housing is ministerial. It has to be administratively, uh, reviewed and approved. Um, further, when it's ministerially reviewed, you can only apply objective standards. So, and I think we've had this discussion before about objective versus subjective standards when talking about, uh, various housing acts that are out there. Uh, objective standards would be things like height limitations, you know, a thirty-foot height limitation. And if a proposed housing, uh, under SB nine did not meet that height requirement, uh, that would be a basis to ministerially deny the permit because obviously there's a codified objective standard that's not being followed there. On the other hand, subjective standards such as not in keeping with the neighborhood, detrimental to surrounding uses, those are standards that could no longer be used to deny, uh, one of these urban lot splits and then the housing that would be developed on that. Uh, further, even if the city applies objective standards, the objective standards have to allow at least two units on the lot of at least eight hundred square feet. Um, so there are some baseline, uh, development rights that this statute gives the developer. And again, this is all ministerial. Uh, parking is limited. Um, the city can only require one off-street parking space per unit. And if the site is close to a transit area or a car-share vehicle location, uh, the city can't require any parking from this housing. Um, there, there are a number of other restrictions on imposing conditions, um, other types of, uh, limitations that the city would be precluded from, uh, enforcing. Uh, correction of non-conforming zoning conditions that are existing on that site. If somebody wants to do this urban lot split, the city could not use an existing nonconformity as a basis for denying, uh, and require correction in order to issue the permit. The permit would still have to be issued. So again, there's a lot of angles to SB nine, I, I'm only scratching the surface on all the details right now. But again, it's, it's one of these where it's going to, uh, limit the city's ability to discretionarily review and then also to, uh, condition or deny these types of projects, all in the, uh, goal of enhancing, uh, housing construction in California. So that's SB nine in a nutshell. Oh, one else, other point I was gonna mention is that, uh, because these would be ministerially approved, SEQA doesn't apply. SEQA only applies to discretionary actions, not ministerial actions. I, I'm not entirely sure if that's going to have a tremendous effect, uh, on the way things are going now because most single-family residential properties, uh, are categorically exempt from SEQA anyway for small structures and small development. Uh, but that could have some impact, uh, you know, to the extent SEQA might be required on a single-family residential project. Now, it wouldn't be if it's one of these urban lot splits. So again, um, again, there's a lot of angles to it. Uh, we are working with staff and we are going to be, uh, coming up with objective standards that can be, uh, codified and applied to these types of projects. Uh, it's just gonna require some thought in putting this together. Um, but we're gonna do that. So that's SB nine in a nutshell. And again, SB nine, yes, I'm sorry.
Have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Only one question a person. Uh, Commissioner Maruzzi and then Commissioner Hirschbein.
Can you combine adjacent lots and, and, and make it into one project? And it'd still be ministerial?
No, there's actually a provision in here that says that neither the, uh, that they are entitled to this urban lot split ministerial approval, provided that neither the owner or no one acting in concert with the owner, uh, has subdivided an adjacent parcel through an SB nine lot split. So you can't lot split under SB nine, then lot split the adjacent one under SB nine. You couldn't do that. Uh, but you could take a single-family residential lot, provided nobody else immediately adjacent has done this and you can. provided nobody else immediately adjacent has done this, and you can split it up for four units.
But if you happen to live next door to somebody who's already done it, too bad for you?
That, the statute says that the ministerial approval wouldn't apply. That's correct. Now, there, there's nothing in the law that would prohibit the city from having a more accommodating policy than SB 9 and perhaps eliminating or limiting that qualifier. That's something we could certainly look at if that's the commission's, you know, desire.
Commissioner Hirschbain.
Okay, so according to Director Fag, this law takes effect January 1. Do you think Palm Springs is going to have its zoning code amended by then? And if not, what happens on January 2 when somebody comes in with this set of plans into the Planning Commission, into the Planning Department?
Well, yes, Commissioner Hirschbain, first of all, we're going to be working with staff to meet that deadline because we're aware that deadline's out there. And if we, you know, we do have objective standards in our code right now for single-family residential development. It's not as if the city's completely devoid of objective standards. But what we're going to do as part of this process is look at those and see if there isn't a way we can refine, clarify, perhaps make those standards a bit more definitive than they currently are now in order to maximize the city's ability to, you know, evaluate and then approve these projects. But no, we are aware of the timeframe and we know that there's not a lot of time. We do need to move on.
So in other words, your goal is to amend the zoning code to comply with SB 9 by that day?
That is our plan. We're going to do our best.
Okay, okay. That's my question. Thanks.
Could a developer do this? Come into, say, five lots and split all five of them?
Well, again, if the five lots are all adjacent to each other, then no, there would be a limitation under SB 9 for that. However, if they were to take, you know, five, well, actually, give me one second here. Because there is one qualifier here. Where is that? Here we go. The applicant owner has to sign an affidavit stating that he or she intends to occupy one of the housing units. So you're going to need to have an owner occupant on the site doing this. I, I don't know that you can just go and have a developer through a land trust or nonprofits or any other just for-profit development company come in and just start committing a ton of these houses like this. Again, these are the details we're going to work out as we work with staff on the regulations there.
And, and would this help with the changes that people wanted on the north end to be able to take some lots and build fourplexes or change them back to the zoning they had before?
To the extent that their property is single-family residential and they want to develop at that higher density, they may be able to do that under SB 9. It's possible.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
This would mean that, for example, the hillside lots, all the discretionary review would be reconsidered. And then the second question is the single-family, is it R1H? Or if it is RG6 or RG8, is that considered a single family? Or is that already considered a smaller lot? Or is it just anything that's under the umbrella of single-family residence?
Yeah, all SB 9 says that the lot is zoned, single-family residential. You know, and then what is single-family residential will depend upon what's in your code. If it's the type of zoning that allows single-family residential, like some of your RG zones, you know, as well as your R1 zones, I think that would apply. Again, these are the details we're going to work out with staff. And we are going to bring something back that will have the standards and, you know, ways to apply this. You know, we're, we're, we are still unpacking this ourselves because this is such recent legislation. But we are going to be working with staff on that.
And SB 10?
SB 10, thank you, Madam Chair. Now, one big difference I want to tell you, first of all, is SB 9 is mandatory. That's going to happen in January 1, and the city's going to have to take action to get in compliance with SB 9. SB 10 is entirely voluntary. SB 10 merely provides legal authority for a city or county to pass an ordinance that allows it to zone any parcel for up to 10 units of residential density at the height specified by the ordinance that the city adopts. Now, in order to do this, the parcel has to be located in what the statute defines as a transit-rich area or an urban infill site. Now, an urban infill site, many of the lots within Palm Springs would qualify likely as an urban infill site because the site would be surrounded by predominantly urban uses. Transit-rich areas are areas where you're within a half-mile of a major transit stop, like a MetroLink station or a bus stop or with a high-quality bus corridor, and that's defined in the statute. Basically, it has to have regular, you know, transit intervals, interval times with the buses. If it meets various other conditions that are set forth in the statute, the city council could adopt an ordinance that allows 10 units on a lot. One of the uncertainties in the statute at this point, and perhaps this is something that's, that's being left without being said so to local regulation, is what's the minimum size of the lot that you would put, you know, up to 10 units of residential on? Would this be a two-acre parcel? Would this be a half-acre parcel? The statute's not clear on that. And so again, that's something that if it's the city's desire to look into an SB 10 ordinance further, we could certainly look in and find out how we would get that codified in the ordinance so that the density and the size of the lots, you know, correlated and generally made sense. But again, SB 10, just to let you know, is optional. SB 9 is not. And that's my summary for the evening.
Thank you.
I have a question about SB 10. Last I knew, I was tracking that for a while, but not right when it passed. I didn't see much of a catch for it in Palm Springs because as I recall, for the transit corridor, obviously, we don't have MetroLink or anything. But you needed to have bus service that ran more frequently than on a 20-minute interval, and I don't think we have that anywhere. Did that, did that stay in the legislation, do you know? And do we have anything that qualifies in Palm Springs?
Thank you, Commissioner. The definition of a, a transit-rich area is defined as within a half-mile of a major transit stop or a parcel on a high-quality bus corridor. That's the specifically defined term. And all the statute says is with a fixed route bus service that meets interval time. So, you know, we, we would have to look into that a little further to see specifically how that would apply to Palm Springs. It may or may not. Again, we'd have to look into that further.
Yeah, if they don't say what the fixed interval is, we might be in confusion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we'd have to, we'd have to look into that further.
Thank you. Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Are there any? Director, Planning Directors' report.
Madam Chair, I think we're all kind of numb at this point. But just very quickly, there were two items that have been appealed from Planning Commission decisions. The first is the Green Savance application that was for the cannabis facility on the west side of the airport near to Vdanz School. That one has been scheduled for the city council meeting of October 14. And then the second appeal that was filed was relative to our approval of the single-family house on Camino Calidad that was designed by Lance O'Donnell. We have a tentative date for that appeal hearing of October the 28th. The city council just wanted to forward that information on to you. And with that, Madam Chair, we have no other comments this evening.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to adjourn the commission until 5:30 on Wednesday, October 13th, 2021.